Good evening and welcome.
Feedback.
Hang on.
Try it again.
It's not me. Okay, let's try it again. Thank you. Welcome and good evening to the Chatham Select Board meeting of September 24th. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly here after for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, that's General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until April 1, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted both in person and via remote for public participation. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410 and the conference ID is 134208476. Or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Well, this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website. And let me say to everyone that's here, welcome. It's kind of nice to look out and see almost the full house. Of course, I may have a different opinion at the end of the meeting, but let me tell you, it's nice to see people in the audience. Let me remind everyone to mute your mics and shut off your cameras. Just to let you know, this is a three agenda meeting we're having. We're going to discuss drinking water and testing with a pumping update, coronavirus, and then we'll get into our business agenda, which is a joint meeting with the Airport Commission. I'll get into more details about that when we get there and the process and how we're going to handle that. So first, let me...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm not sure we're having the coronavirus update. We're not having it.
Scratch that. We'll have the drinking water and testing and pumping update. Okay, thank you. So, let me take a vote on it for a quorum. Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Member Metters.
Present.
Select Board Member DeCastro.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
And the chair is present. And since we're having a joint meeting, Huntley, would you get a quorum for your...
Roll call for the Airport Commissioners. Commissioner Burke?
Present.
Commissioner Cortese?
Microphones.
I'll try that again. This will be a roll call for the Airport Commission. Commissioner Burke?
Present.
Commissioner Cortese?
Present.
Commissioner Donovan?
Present.
Commissioner Galen?
Present.
Commissioner Owens?
Present.
Commissioner Wilcox? Commissioner Harrison?
Present.
Thank you, Huntley. So let's start with our pumping update. Is that Tom or Dr. Bob?
Dr. Bob is going to sort it out for us.
Hey, Dr. Bob.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you know, we have been testing wells five and eight on a regular basis since the initial detection of PFOS back in April. And the latest, the most recent set of test results were taken last week, and we received the results of those on Friday. We sent out to the board the updated spreadsheet, and if you let me share my screen here quickly, I will put that up as well. So here is the latest update showing the results from samples that were taken on the 7th of September, and the results where those were received on Friday. And we took samples out of well number eight on that particular day. We had done well five previously. And we took four samples. We took two raw water samples as well as two treated water samples. And as you can see, out of the four samples, three of those were above the maximum contaminant level of 20 parts per trillion. And they were only slightly above. One was at 20.5, one was 20.1, one was 20.2, and the fourth result was slightly below at 19.8. So on the basis of that information, early Friday morning, well number eight was shut down and taken offline. Subsequent to that, I had conversations with Tom Barr from the Water Department, with Town Manager Goldsmith, and Tom Barr also had subsequent conversations with Mass DEP. And it was determined by DEP because they look at the quarterly average. So in this case, it was all the sample results for June, sorry, for July, August, and September. And on the basis of that, when you look at the quarterly results, which is the farthest right green column, the quarterly average for well number eight was only 16.7. So it did not exceed the maximum contaminant level on an average basis. However, we did have the three individual samples that exceeded that. So technically, we are not required by DEP regulation to take the well offline. However, it was already offline. We talked about bringing it back, but the decision was made to keep the well offline until it could be discussed with your board, as well as for the public perception, similar to what we'd encountered back in the 1990s with the PCE contamination in well four, where even though the levels were either below or just at the MCL for that, the public really told the community, or told the town, they didn't want us knowingly putting any water into the public water supply system that had contaminants in it, regardless of the level. So on the basis of that, this decision was made to keep the well offline. We ended up sending out a press release later that morning to remind the community of all the various water restrictions that had been made mandatory back in May in response to the fact that well number five was offline at that period, as well as the fact we were entering into the summer drought. So as of Friday, we had well five offline. We also had well eight offline, and we are still in a drought condition. So we reissued that press release. We also talked about instituting more draconian, if you will, water restrictions. And they included basically two options, one of which was a total ban on outdoor watering. And then the second option was to reduce the watering down to only two days a week, depending on your address. And so even-numbered houses would be allowed to water on Monday and Thursday. Odd-numbered houses would be able to water on Tuesday, Friday. There would be no outdoor watering on Wednesday, Saturday, or Sunday. We clarified the amount of water because currently in the water restrictions, it talks about one inch or less per watering event. In reality, the guidance from EPA, the state, and many other organizations is one inch or less per week. You don't need one inch of rain every two days. Basically, vegetation does fine with one inch of rain a week. So we talked about clarifying that to one inch of rain or less per week. And then we added a prohibition on washing of vehicles. Currently, there's a prohibition on washing sidewalks and driveways, and we felt it was prudent to add a prohibition on the washing of vehicles. So those were discussed on Friday. The decision was ultimately made not to institute either of those as of Friday, but to bring that back to this board, have a discussion with you tonight, and make a determination as to whether or not you wanted to take the tact of instituting any of those more stringent water restrictions. And so that, we have Tom Barr here tonight from the Water Division. I believe Tom Temple is on as well. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bob. Jeff?
Thank you, Peter. Just to have a couple, Bob, thanks for the update. How long do you think it's going to take for well number four to get online is my first question? And then what's the recent pumpage been the last week or so? How are we trending?
We expect to have well number four online in the next couple of weeks. It's getting close to being finished, and then it will have to go through some testing with DEP and all before we get their approval to bring that online. And then, as you know, we would bring that back to this board as well. Although you did last week indicate that as soon as that well was ready, we could go ahead and bring it online, just depending on timing. If it's, you know, Monday or Tuesday, we'd probably bring it back to you. But if we get DEP's approval, say, on Wednesday, rather than waiting until the next week, we'd go ahead and bring it back online. And then, Tom, I think you can probably, or Tom, either Tom Barr or Tom Temple can speak to the usage. I do know from a conversation with Tom Barr this afternoon that the usage over the weekend did go down compared to what we had seen previously, and we felt that was as a result of sending out the press release and getting the news out. So I see Tom's on now, if you want to expand on that.
Yeah, so this weekend, we did have a slight increase in pumping with just self-Chatham and the Morton Road facilities supplying the water. They did run for about 16 hours a day, which is a little long for just them because that's going to tax the system a little bit. But overall, for the month of September so far, we are down 18% from last year of 2020. So that is a good sign. And if we could implement more restrictions, it would definitely help us to be able to keep well eight offline until we can get some more testing results.
So that's positive, that the pumpage is down month so far. That's good. Okay, well, I think we have to do one or the other.
Yeah, I agree. It's either a ban or a limited continuation of a limited amount of reduction.
Yeah, certainly our priority is drinking water.
Yeah, Shereen, Corey, and then Dean. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Bob, for the update. I know the last time Mr. Barr was here, he spoke about next year and what we're going to be facing next year if we don't have a bit of snow meltage and whatnot. Drought conditions have been pretty extreme for the Cape, especially Chatham. We just haven't had the rain, and when we've had the rain, it's not made a significant difference. I'm, if we're going to see well four within the next couple of weeks on, Tom, is that a, is that, is it possible that, well, either Tom, actually. If we're going to see the well running, are there any, are there any problems with it getting online? I mean, would there be anything that's going to all of a sudden be a snag or an issue? Are there any expectations that it's just going to be a Claire Belle and it'll just get turned on by, you know, after approval from the state? What are we looking at for four?
So basically, what we will need to do is we're just going to have to run some testing with all of the chemical feed pumps that were installed this past week. We will hook it up to our SCADA system, which is a system that we use so that we can see how everything's operating remotely and that it's calling out for alarms if there is, say, a high pH or a high chlorine or any other alarms of that nature. We just have to make sure all those are going to call out. So the SCADA representative, Woodland Carvin, will be in next week to hopefully finish up his side of things. We'll start doing the testing of all of the alarms, make sure they're going to call out to our on-call operators. And then, once that's all approved, we'll get that information to DEP. They'll do a quick assessment, go through everything, make sure everything falls in line, and then we should be able to turn that on. So we're hoping...
Sorry, I just have to run to meeting. Thank you. I'm, you know, I looked at the two options that we have here, and one is the total watering ban effective immediately. And then we see reduction of outside watering for two days and what Dr. Bob had gone through. And I don't think people understand about the value of our water in this town and how they're using it and what we need to be doing right now as a matter of reserving what, you know, in a drought situation. So I would have no problem, I'm looking at the more extreme side of total outdoor water ban effective immediately for the time period before four is on. Just, I think that this is a good time for education for people, understand, you know, drought-resistant lawns and things that, you know, we can do. The fact that Dr. Bob had said that gardens and whatnot only require an inch of water. We're not in the heat of the summer, so that's where I'm heading in that direction. But I'm not ready to make a motion on that yet. My thoughts.
Thank you, Shereen. Corey?
Yeah, Mr. Thank you, Peter. Just a kind of thought, in either scenario, when you think about water usage, I think the biggest culprit that people jump out on is irrigation systems, which is fine. But I think the reality is, most of these systems are on timers. So the owners are not, they may be gone to their secondary home, the houses that are being rented. So in any, either of the scenarios, you got to factor in what it's going to take to reset the timers or shut the system off, especially if it's a rental house. I don't think the tenant's going to take the responsibility for fiddling with the system. So just mechanics-wise, you just got to keep that in mind. You know, systems are being turned down probably in a couple of weeks. So I guess you could argue if you told someone, oh, we're going to change the watering cycle to two days a week, and if property owners call in their irrigation company to change the dial, they're probably just going to have the system shut off at this point, and that can just do service calls. So you just got to think about the mechanics about it. You know, if we put the all-banned out in effect, there will be houses that are just going to run because the timer's there and no one's home. And, you know, it may take a while to kind of kick in. So this mechanically, we got to keep that in mind. You know, I think people have abided much better by, you know, the recommendations that we put in place so far. But I just want to be realistic about what we are going to achieve, and maybe we put some of these measures in until pump four goes on and then reevaluate from there, kind of a step-one, step-two process. If pump four comes on in a couple of weeks, then we can kind of see how things go. If there's a kicker and there's a delay in pump four, we really definitely want to consider what to do beyond that point. So I think it's kind of a step-one, step-two scenario. Take an action now, get pump four up and going, assess it when pump four's going, and then either ease up, move forward, or take whatever action really is deemed necessary based on the data at hand. So those are my thoughts at the moment.
Thank you, Corey. Dean?
Thank you, Peter. I just wanted to point out that the board took a vote last week to authorize the, authorize putting number four online. You don't have to come back to us at all. It was contingent on getting the DEP approvals. You can come back to us for information purposes, but I would hope that once that is all together and you have the approvals, that will go online immediately. With respect to the two options, I guess I wanted to ask the, our experts, do you think that in the interim between now and when four goes online, that the two-day-a-week proposal would suffice? Do you have a guess about that? I realize it's totally speculative. Does anybody want to speak to that?
I'll speak to that. Really, it's just, like Mr. Metter said, it's the mechanics of it all. The people that aren't here, they're not going to be able to change their timers, or they're not going to probably call their guys to make those adjustments. So we'd really be relying on the residents that are here, the year-round residents that have their irrigations on, to turn that down. My biggest concern is the, another well goes down for whatever reason, mechanical failure. You know, well three goes down because it overheated or whatnot because of the extended three or four hours a day that it has to pump because well eight's no longer there. That's where the restrictions factor in, in my opinion. That's when I look at that.
Okay.
And I echo Tom's concerns as well because when you're losing 970 gallons per minute between wells five and eight, and you have well two, which gets close to the screen and shuts off at three, at three-foot elevation, it's taking us, even on Saturday and Sunday, where, you know, we had a higher hit for the amount of pumpage we were doing, it still took us 12 hours to fill those tanks back up. So, you know, while it's only, you know, several weeks until we might have that well four up and running, it's still, we're taxing this system that we have, the water distribution system, which is so important. You know, I think we need to keep that in mind on the direction that we're going.
Okay, I appreciate those comments. If we do make a further restriction, is there any benefit in notifying the irrigation companies directly so they can notify their customers? Is that something we've done before, I think?
Yes.
Okay. And if we do something in this direction, I think we should include, as we have done previously, a request to those who are on private wells to voluntarily restrict as well. Just putting everything together, I am in agreement with Select Board Member Davis. I think we should probably go with the tougher restriction at this time.
Thank you, Dean. Before I go to Jeff, Dr. Bob has his hand up. Go ahead, Bob. Still up or...
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to follow up on Shereen's comments about the aquifer and whatnot. And if you let me share my screen here just quickly, these are the most recent data from USGS as of this afternoon. And it shows, whoops, sorry, wrong one. This one. And it does show, if you look at the very far right of both the Chatham and the Brewster graphs, you see this little tiny uptick in groundwater levels as a result of our, you know, four and a half to five and a half inches of rain last week. But it's already, when you look at it closer and more detail, it's already starting to tail off. So that is not, that increase is not going to continue. And as you can tell, since 2019, we are, you know, almost two feet or a little over two feet below where we were in 2019 at this time of the year. So, you know, unless we get a substantial snowmelt this winter, which none of us knows whether or not that will happen, we are going to continue in this drought situation and more than likely still be in a drought next summer. So I think if you're going to impose additional regulation, I wouldn't, my recommendation is I wouldn't make it contingent upon well four because just bringing well four back online, you know, it's definitely going to help, but it's not going to be the cure-all for losing five and eight. It will help the situation, but I would suggest, you know, if you put those mandatory restrictions and make them more stringent, that you just do that open-ended for right now till we get through the winter and see what kind of winter we do have. If we do get a lot of snowmelt or a lot of rain and whatnot, and we start to see those groundwater levels coming back up, if not, you know, we're going to be in the same or worse condition coming next year because chances are wells five and eight will, you know, still be offline because of PFOS potentially. And the other thing I wanted to mention is we have had some PFOS hits in well four. You know, they've been relatively low levels, but keep in mind, well four's been offline since the 1990s. And if we start pumping that well on a regular basis, we may see those levels start to increase, and we may run into a problem again. So well four is not necessarily the solution to this entire problem. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, given the fact that we've got two wells offline, and we've had a drought, and I think, you know, the most conservative approach is the most appropriate at this point, even hearing what our experts are saying, or in light, I should say, of what our experts are saying. So I would move that we would have a total outdoor watering ban effective immediately. And we can revisit it when well four comes online, but I take what Dr. Bob says to heart that we really need to think about the long-term, the long-term, meaning, you know, depending on what kind of winter we have, what kind of snow we get, and what kind of water receipts we get, if you will. But I would move that we had, we...
You want to make it a formal motion?
I want to make it a formal motion, yeah. A formal motion, yeah.
I'll second that.
All right. I'm going to make a comment, and then I'll reach out to the public. I think everyone knows that we, the board, town, has made our water supply and the quality of our water the most important, important issue that we have. It's our highest priority. And I think it's worth saying, and Tom Temple usually says it all the time, but our weather, water is safe to drink now. Got to remember that the number of parts per trillion that were allowed was considerably higher than where it is now. That doesn't make it any better. But the point is, our, when we noticed something that was over the amount, the well was shut down immediately. There was no fooling around about it. So I think we've taken the right action. I tend to agree that, you know, you look at what's the downside if we don't put a full ban on, and what's the downside if we put a partial ban on? I think the risk is higher with a partial ban. We don't know what the water's going, what kind of a rain season we're going to have and so forth. So it'd be easier to come back up than it would be to go back down because we've already lost some ground. Is there, are there any public input? Anything online?
No.
Hearing none. Any more discussion on the motion? Jeff?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to include also a communication to the irrigation companies that they reach out to their customers as well on that motion.
Okay, modified the second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's take a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bob and Tom, and Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our joint meeting with the Airport Commission. We have a couple of charts. Mr. Terion, you're going to put the first chart up, two charts, and I'll make a comment. While he's putting the introduction chart on, I don't see him. I'll make my comments, it's okay. And so that, the one, no, go back a couple.
I'm sharing the screen. Is it coming up? I'm sorry. It's Terry.
I'm sharing the screen. Is it coming up? I'm sorry. It's Terry.
It is, Terry, but it's on slide two.
Yeah, go to just the, you know, the, the front. Okay, you can leave it there for now, and I won't do it. Okay, and I, I just, I'm doing this, most of what I'm going to say, a lot of it's in our staff report, but for a number of people that don't have our agenda, so we're all on the same page, I'm going to, I'm going to be a little more, take a little more time. All right. The Select Board and Airport Commission, with the Town Council, held a joint airport governance meeting on December 1st of, of last year. The agenda included the responsibilities and jurisdiction of federal, state, and local entities over the Chatham Airport. Tonight's meeting is a continuing effort to provide information on how these multiple levels, specifically the FAA, Mass. General Law, and the Town Charter, manage, operate, maintain, finance, and plan for the Chatham Airport. Will address the authority and venue of multiple airport-related agenda requests. Will highlight authority, for example, the AM, the authorities involved with the AMPU, maybe the EAs, the Select Board, and the Airport Commission. For a brief, after a brief conology on the establishment and history of the Chatham Municipal Airport, the following areas are going to be covered. Take the next chart, please, Terry. And those are the four that are mentioned there. I don't have to read them for you. I'll leave them up there for a minute so you can see it. And this is not unlike what we did before. So you know, Town Council will provide the bulk of the airport governance overview and be available for questions and comments on legislative, and we'll call it established powers, as well as roles and authority. Public comments are limited to three minutes. They will follow the Select Board and the Airport Commission. This is consistent with December format and allows for availability and flexibility based on the number of people who wish to speak. And I am flexible, but just think of others that are in the room and online. Okay, the next chart, I'll turn it over to Chair, Terry, and he can give the history also. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Peter. This is Terry Whalen, the Airport Commission Staff Liaison. So building on, on the, on the previous chart and the overview and introduction just provided by the chair, the kind of core of the discussion, you know, our, our presentation this evening includes basically a, primarily a three-part distribution of, of jurisdiction. So the chart that we're displaying right now is broken up into the three primary areas for governance. So there are other areas that come into play with different types of regulations or projects, but we're going to focus on the, the three primary areas of, of governance, being the, starting at the center, we have the, the local, local jurisdiction and where some of those items come from, particularly the Town Charter and Mass. General Law 39, Section 10. So the, the core of, of the operation and management is in the center of this chart, indicating the, the local jurisdiction and governance. So we, radiating out from the municipal, Chatham Municipal Airport, you can see the relationships between the, the Town Manager regarding buildings and administration and financial coordination with the Commission and the Town Manager. So broadening our scope a little bit as well, the, with the introduction of the state portion on the left of the graphic includes primarily from Chapter 90, and we have the Mass. Aeronautics Division, really where the primary management authority flows to the Airport Commission. They're also responsible for operational compliance. And on the right of the chart, you have the federal portion of the governance. So again, that, that comes through the Federal Aviation Administration and Fed Public, Federal Public Laws, which really spells out the sponsor duties, grant assurances, compliance, and then operational compliance with many rules and regulations regarding operation, maintenance, and overall aircraft operations. So that's, again, the primary, three primary categories we're going to talk about this evening, but I'm just going to dive into the chart a little bit more here. I know I started with the airport and the relationship with the, the Town Manager and the Commission. And the Town Manager, at, at the top of the chart here, you also have the, the Select Board with the Appointment Authority of the Airport Commissioners, and then also Town Charter, Financial Administration Authority, relationships with the Town Manager. So the Airport Commission also has management oversight through the Airport Management Services Agreement, which is here. And then that authority oversight then flows to the Airport Manager, and the, also the Town Manager is also involved in compliance with that agreement and certain specified approvals in the Airport Management Services Agreement. And the authority for the Airport Manager for onsite authority, again, flows from the Airport Management Services Agreement. And not to spend too much time, but for, for context, for, for people who may not have been on the previous presentation, so to kind of backfill the information on how we arrived at the, the chart with the three primary jurisdiction areas, we do need to go back a little bit at the history and establishment of the airport, and then going back to the late 1920s, the, the history of the airport. There were eight parcels assembled by Wilford Barubi for an airfield. It was privately owned and operated in the '30s. In the 19, in 1940, the Mass. Massachusetts Aeronautics Commission approved the airport for commercial use. So in 1949, really is when we were starting to set up the governance structure. So in 1949, the Town Meeting allocated 43,750 to match the same amount in state grants, and then 87,500 in federal contributions. So, and this was to acquire properties, to make runway improvements, and establish the Chatham Airport Commission. So, so essentially, that's the annual Town Meeting, 1949, Article 42. So as part of that, this recognition of the Chatham Municipal Airport as part of the Federal Aviation Administration's, or FAA, National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems, this makes Chatham Municipal Airport eligible for airport improvement or AIP funding. And with that, I would actually turn over to Pat, Town Council Pat Costello to run you through the details of the specifics of, again, these three broad areas of, of governance, and then I'll, I'll close with some additional items on funding and some resources.
Thank you, Terry, and welcome, Pat.
Turn it back to you, and then-
Okay, thank, thank.
As you move.
Let me try that one more time. Thank you, Terry. And welcome, Pat.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. Thank you, Terry. To summarize briefly what Terry said, the, the governance of the Chatham Airport is established by an interplay of, of three sources of law. We have federal law, we have state law through general laws, Chapter 90 primarily, and we also have local administrative laws adopted by the Town of Chatham in accordance with its authority under the Homeworld Charter. And in specific reference to the Chatham Airport, we have Chapter 100 of our general bylaws, which enables the Airport Commission to adopt rules and regulations and to remediate airport hazards with respect to operations at the airport. The primary source of legal regulation of the airport operations would have to be the federal law that relates to aviation and publicly assisted airports. The federal government has essentially preempted the areas of airspace use, management and efficiency, air traffic control, safety, navigational facilities, and the regulation of aircraft source at its, aircraft noise, I'm sorry, at its source. There, there's a broad scheme of, of federal laws that governs all of those areas, and there's ample case law that, that has established that the federal law preempts the ability of, of state and local authorities to interfere with the federal supremacy over those particular areas. In Massachusetts, we have general laws, Chapter 90, which was adopted initially in 1946, and it establishes many powers and duties for airport commissions, for those towns that choose to adopt airport commissions. Section 51D establishes the base authority for a town to appoint an airport commission, such as Chatham has done. The following provisions of Chapter 90, Sections 51, E, et cetera, break out in particular specificity the powers and duties that airport commission members can exercise. In essence, the Airport Commission has care, custody, and control over the airport. It, it runs the airport on a daily basis. It is, in my opinion, the chief executive authority with respect to airport operations. It has the authority to enter into contracts, to accept and expend funds, whether they be federal funds, state funds, or, or local appropriations, for the purpose of managing, operating, and maintaining an airport. One of the key powers that an airport commission has under Section 51G is the authority to exercise eminent domain. Just for the benefit of the, of the listeners, eminent domain is, is a legal right of the town to acquire property for public purposes and for public use. In order for a town to execute the power of eminent domain, there are two essential statutory provisions involved. Number one, there has to be an underlying authorizing provision that empowers a particular board agency or officer of a town to exercise eminent domain power. And then number two, within Chapter 79 of the general laws, there's a very definitive statutory scheme of procedures that have to be followed very strictly when a town chooses to exercise the power of eminent domain. Those statutory procedures involve proper notice to all parties affected or impacted by the eminent domain taking. It requires that a taking authority conduct appraisals of any and all properties that are going to be impacted by an order of taking, so that those property owners can be compensated fairly inequitably for whatever interests have been acquired by the town or for whatever negative impacts have resulted to their remaining properties. Appraisals are prerequisite to the adoption of, of an order of taking, and the payment of damages pursuant to said appraisals at fair and equitable amounts is, is a statutory prerequisite. Any party who wishes to challenge an eminent domain action by the town has a right under Chapter 79 to initiate suit within the Superior Court, challenging either the, the propriety of the purpose of the taking, or more commonly, challenging the award of damages that the town has made on account of a, a taking order. With regard to the airport, it, it's my opinion that the Airport Commission, by virtue of the provisions of Section 51G of Chapter 90, has very broad authority and power to exercise eminent domain, not only, as noted in, in the slide here, for the purpose of mitigating aviation hazards outside of airport properties, but also for general airport purposes. Section 51G is very explicit that the Airport Commission may acquire interest in real property by eminent domain for not only hazard mitigation purposes, but also for the purposes of establishing an airport and for general airport purposes. Accordingly, I view the Airport Commission in Chatham as the primary authority with the right by statute to exercise eminent domain authority. Boards of selectmen in towns do have a general right to exercise eminent domain authority under general laws, Chapter 40, Section 14. However, the purposes for which a board of selectmen can exercise eminent domain while for any public purpose are somewhat circumscribed by a provision in Section 14 that states essentially that a board of selectmen can exercise the right of eminent domain to the extent not otherwise provided, or that no other provision of general law specifically provides for that right. This particular situation under Chapter 90, Section 51G, in my view, is akin to several other statutes within the general laws that authorize other town boards and agencies, such as a, a municipal redevelopment authority, a municipal housing authority, a, a municipal conservation commission. They all have the right to acquire real property for specific purposes within their, their statutory oversight. In those particular situations, I would suggest that those specific bodies, like the Airport Commission in Chatham under Chapter 90, Section 51G, have the right to exercise eminent domain for their designated purposes. In, in this particular case, when takings are required or necessary for airport purposes, in my view, the Airport Commission is the authority that would have the statutory ability to acquire property. We can talk more about that. I'm sure there'll be some questions on that, but that's my general, my general take on, on, on taking authority. The Airport Commission also, as noted here, has a right to establish certain charges for rentals and use of airport properties. There are certain uses of the Chatham Municipal Airport that the Airport Commission has in fact entered into agreements or concession agreements with respect to, and that's clearly within its authority under Section 51H. Moving on to the next slide, Section 51I authorizes the Airport Commission to expend funds and make contracts, enter into contracts. And it's noteworthy therein that there's a specific clause that says that when federal funds are provided to the airport or the Airport Commission as acting on behalf of the town as sponsor, any requirements or restrictions on the expenditure of those funds that is set forth in federal law would likewise apply to the Airport Commission's authority to expend those federal funds. Thus, to the extent that the federal government through the FAA or otherwise provides grants or funding to the airport pursuant to federal funding programs, the Airport Commission and the town are restricted to expend those funds in accordance with the specific requirements or limitations that are established by federal law. The Airport Commission also has the right to adopt rules and regulations regarding airport operations that are consistent with state and federal regulations. And within that consistency with, with state and federal regulations is the inferred understanding that any preemption of, of regulation by state or federal authorities would, would be binding upon the Airport Commission as well. We cannot adopt rules and regulations for the operation of the Chatham Municipal Airport that are contrary to or inconsistent with any, you know, superior or priority state or federal regulations. Section 51K again authorizes the, the Airport Commission to receive federal funds on behalf of the Airport Commission. In many instances, those federal funds are administered through Mass. DOT as the state agency with oversight over aeronautic activities within the Commonwealth. Otherwise, generally speaking, the Airport Commission is required, like every other town, agency, and department, to comply with applicable procurement laws that are set forth in state and federal statutes. And the Airport Commission in Chatham does that with the assistance of and through the office of the Town Manager, who pursuant to our charter and state law is, is the chief procurement officer of the town. And the Town Manager and her office will accordingly work in conjunction with the Airport Commission with respect to the procurement of supplies- with respect to the procurement of supplies, services, and goods, much as it would with any other department and its procurement activities. Okay, next slide, please. We have adopted, as noted earlier, Chapter 100 of the general bylaws. This is the Airport Approach Protection Bylaw. It was initially adopted by a town meeting in 1958. And what it does, in essence, is regulates and restricts the height of structures and objects of natural growth located within the vicinity of the airport to maintain safety for the users of the airport, for those in the air and on the ground. It is a right that is specifically vested in the airport commission by General Laws Chapter 90, Section 51A. And our bylaw, as noted, was adopted in 1958, as was the Airport Approach Plan. That's part of the bylaw. We will take a look at that in a minute, but, you know, in my view, it may be time at this juncture to take a look at the Airport Approach Plan to determine whether it is adequate and properly secures the interests of safety, health, and general welfare within the vicinity of the airport as it is currently configured. The Airport Approach Protection Bylaw, as noted, has as a general purpose to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the public by preventing the creation, establishment, and maintenance of airport hazards. It authorizes the airport commission to issue orders, as it deems necessary and appropriate, to remove any obstructions or growth of natural vegetation that could constitute a hazard to aviation activities at the airport. And the airport commission has a right as well to conduct hearings and to grant variances in particular situations where they may be warranted and strict compliance with the requirements of the Protection Bylaw are waivable accordingly. The Airport Approach Protection Bylaw is very similar or consistent with similar such bylaws in other communities that have public airports. It is one tool that is available to the airport commission to maintain conditions in and around the airport that are safe and convenient for aviation activities. A violation of the Airport Approach Protection Bylaw can be enforceable by court action, noncriminal disposition, such as violations of other local bylaws are. So if the airport commission is unable to compel compliance with an order issued pursuant to Chapter 100, it does have available to it the option of either going to district court for noncriminal disposition or going to Superior Court to seek an injunction order to compel a property owner to comply with a duly issued order by the commission. This is a copy of the aforementioned Airport Approach Protection map plan. As you can see, it was first adopted and has remained consistent with what was adopted in 1958. So that is the plan that establishes the airport approaches for purposes of enforcement of the bylaw. And any property within the confines of the approach zones, as shown in this plan, would be subject to the airport commission's exercise of jurisdiction under Chapter 100. Okay. As I noted earlier, the governance of the airport is a combination of application of federal, state, and local laws. We in Chatham, like many communities, have adopted a Home Rule Charter under the Home Rule Amendment to the Constitution and in accordance with Chapter 39, Section 10. The charter is a governing document that are our law that is on the same par as general laws. Accordingly, a charter is to be read in conjunction with general laws in the implementation and management of town governmental affairs. The Chatham Airport Commission is an agency or body of the town of Chatham. In its capacity, exercising the rights, powers, and duties it has under Chapter 90, Section 51A, etc., it works in conjunction with other appropriate town offices, most frequently with the office of the town manager. The town manager, as the chief administrative officer of the town, has broad authority, acting as a procurement officer with respect to financial affairs of the town. Most of the financial transactions that the town is engaged in in some way, shape, or form run through the office of the town manager. That's by virtue of the powers granted to the town manager under Section 4-7 of the town charter, as set forth here in this slide. And the town manager would implement these general powers and duties that she wields in conjunction with the executive authority that other town boards and agencies has, whether it's the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, the Airport Commission, Board of Health. All of those boards have independent statutory charges and duties vested in them by general law. Implementing them on a day-to-day basis in the course of daily governance, however, does require the input and assistance in relationship with the office of the town manager and other administrative staff of the town. So the town manager will exercise the daily administration, preparation, operation of town affairs, will administer and enforce provisions of laws of the Commonwealth, and will exercise her financial oversight authority with the airport commission and the airport manager in that joint or dual role of authorities granted under Chapter 90 and under the charter and other provisions of general law. Next slide, please, Terry. Similarly, the Select Board, by virtue of the provisions of the town charter, serves as the chief executive authority of the town, the chief policymaking board or agency of the town. It also appoints specifically the airport commissioners, as well as other boards, committees, and offices of the town. That airport commissioner appointing authority is specifically vested by Chapter 90, Section 51E, as well as the town charter, wherein the airport commission is listed as a body that is appointed by the Select Board. The Select Board is the ultimate controller of the town meeting warrant and thus holds the purse strings of the town, if you will, in terms of what is to be presented to town meeting for appropriation of funds. For example, any airport capital requests for noneligible billings, AIP local match appropriations, etc. would have to be appropriated by town meeting and would have to be placed on a town meeting warrant by the Select Board for town meeting action. Thus, consistent with the provisions of Chapter 39, Section 10, which essentially state in this regard that the Board of Selectmen control the town meeting warrants and determine what articles are included and not included within the warrant. The Select Board also has a general authority to investigate the affairs of the town or any agency thereof, or to authorize the town manager to conduct such investigations. That's a power that is very commonly and frequently stated in charters, and it's consistent with the Select Board's role as the chief executive authority of the town. So to the extent issues may arise with regard to the airport, I see nothing whatsoever inappropriate or improper with the Board of Selectmen inquiring as to such matters or authorizing an investigation into such matters if it deems it appropriate. However, I do not deem that particular authority to go so far as to allow the Board of Selectmen to supersede or overstep the authority of the airport commission in the operation, maintenance, and repair of the airport. I believe that that is a function that is specifically vested in the airport commission by the express provisions of General Laws Chapter 90. Okay, next slide. As I noted at the outset, the federal government has preemptive authority, which means local or state agencies cannot overstep or supersede the authority of the federal government with respect to specific areas, including use of airspace, management and efficiency of air traffic, air traffic control, safety, navigational facilities, and the regulation of aircraft noise at its source. All of those areas fall exclusively within the domain of the federal government and specifically the Federal Aviation Administration to regulate and administer. Congress has adopted multiple, complex, and lengthy statutes relating to FAA authority and the supervision that the federal government applies over aeronautical activity. The reason for that is pretty self-evident. I mean, we have a country of, you know, of multiple states, territories, and there has to be a consistent and easily implemented scheme of control and monitoring of aeronautical activity. All aviators have to have some consistent basis to conduct their operations in all airports who are accepting or delivering aircraft into federal airspace must be held to relatively consistent and similar standards of compliance and performance in order for there to be a workable national aviation system. And that's the basis of the federal sovereignty concept with regard to the use of airspace. Next slide, please, Terry. All right, the FAA has adopted very specific regulations regarding takeoff, landing, and use of aircraft within navigable airspace. Their jurisdiction generally begins at an altitude of 500 feet above the surface of the ground. Their objective and their charge is to maintain safe and efficient use of such airspace. The FAA has the right to establish standards which identify obstructions to air navigation, imaginary surfaces, navigational aids, facilities. It is, again, in the vein of consistency with regard to aircraft operations that it has preempted this particular field. So the town, as much as any other airport, whether it be public or private, is subject to these airport regulations, and we have no option but to comply with them. Next slide, please. With regard to grant assurances, that's another issue that comes up very frequently in Chatham. And whenever the town accepts federal funding for operation, maintenance, and repair of the Chatham Airport, as virtually all public airports do, it subjects itself to contractual obligations with the FAA in the form of grant assurances. Grant assurances are obligations that the town assumes and that are enforceable by the FAA as a result of the financial investment that the federal government has made in the respective airports that receive these funds. With respect to maintaining clear airspace, Grant Assurance 19 requires that the airport must commit to ensuring that the airspace is cleared of present and future hazards. The FAA provides, through regulation and guidelines, multiple avenues by which that assurance of airspace safety is to be met. In the most strict or severe instance, the FAA would love nothing more than for the town to acquire fee title to any and all property in and around the airport that could be subject to a present or future hazard. The acquisition of fee interest in property could be accomplished by eminent domain taking. We do that very sparingly, obviously. Most local governmental entities do not want to involuntarily acquire private property unless it's absolutely essential to do so. And in the Chatham situation, there have been a few instances of acquisition of property by eminent domain for airport operations, but for the most part, the town has avoided taking the most stringent fee acquisition approach to assuring the safety of airspace and clearing hazards. A less intrusive option would be to acquire easements by way of navigation easements, which basically restrict the use of property or restrict the nature of improvements or growth of vegetation that can take place on property in an effort, again, to assure that there aren't any present or future hazards that could interfere with flights in and out of the airport and the operation of the airport. As I noted earlier, if the town were to exercise that right to acquire navigation easements, it would have to comply strictly with the provisions of General Laws Chapter 79. It would have to conduct appropriate appraisals of any interest in property that are negatively impacted by those navigation easements. It'd have to issue appropriate notice to not only the owners, but any mortgagees or other lien holders within those properties. And it would have to adopt an order of taking at a public meeting and record the order at the registry indeed so that there is due and proper notice of the rights that the town has acquired for those purposes. As an even lesser intrusive means of enforcing this Grant Assurance 19, I suggest that the town could implement the provisions of our bylaw, Chapter 100, to assure that any structures or growth of trees in the vicinity of the airport does not exceed the heights that we would consider to be reasonable and necessary to maintain the safety of airports, of the airport. The enforcement of the bylaw, as I noted earlier, could be done by the airport commission and its agents administratively, by the issuance of orders to property owners to undertake certain actions to eliminate hazards. And if those orders are not properly complied with, we would have the right to pursue judicial action to compel compliance with those particular orders. All right, I'll settle with that one, Terry. As I noted earlier, noise regulation is one of the areas that the FAA has preemptive authority over. That means that local regulations cannot govern or restrict aircraft noise from its source. In other words, any noise generated by aircraft is strictly within the realm of federal regulation. There's a wealth of case law out there throughout the country and in virtually every district on this issue. And there are certainly, as there always are with regard to complex statutes, different takes by different judges on the extent and scope of the preemptive force that federal noise regulations have. The one seeming exception to what has otherwise been uniformly construed by the courts as preemptive authority within the FAA is the exercise of state and local police power relative to airport operations. Airport operations obviously entail a variety of regulations adopted at the local level. Certainly, while aircraft are in the air, I would suggest that local authorities cannot exercise their police powers to regulate any noise generated by that aircraft. exercise their police powers to regulate any noise generated by that aircraft. The federal courts have even knocked down and deemed invalid certain regulations that adopted by local authorities that attempt to restrict the times of day within which aircraft can depart or land at airports as being contrary to the federal scheme of regulation. But there may be some wiggle room in terms of restricting our local regulation of aircraft movement on the ground within the confines of the airport and things of that nature. But as a general matter, based on the body of law that exists right now and has consistently existed since at least 1973, the FAA does have a fairly broad preemptive authority over the regulation of noise generated by aircraft. I think that's it for my part for now, Terry.
Yeah, thanks, Pat. Yeah, and I'll again go through the last two slides here. So, and just building upon that last slide, back in June of this year, in response to differing complaints regarding noise, the Airport Commission did issue a press release with some resources for reporting various types of violations, and with the launch also of the new website, also added a reporting page, which, as you can see here, you know, under the Airport Commission page, reporting aircraft, airport concerns, and have laid out a list electronically mirroring what had been originally issued in the press release and also updated, as FAA did also between that timeframe, changed some of the context. So, on the Airport Commission page, citizens looking to make reports or contact various entities, it's spelled out on the page for aircraft noise. You can get information on the Commission's adopted fly-friendly program, and there's a link for the public to report to the FAA, basically contacting directly the noise ombudsman via email, and also there's a phone number for the region as well. So, these would go directly to the FAA New England region. Previously, they had been going to the national, but that changed in the timeframe from the issuance of the press release to the rollout of this reporting aircraft, airport concerns page. Also, similarly, again, with the preemption on the operation of aircraft, low-flying aircraft can be reported to the FAA on their reporting hotline, which, again, there's a link on the page here, https://hotline.faa.gov or calling 1-800-255-1111. Any questions regarding ground operations, which, again, is clearly within the jurisdiction of the airport manager, there's contact info here to contact the airport manager, both the email link and a phone number, and then regarding airport policy, contact information for, directly to the Airport Commission. And just quickly, so just filling in some more of the information on the, some other items flowing from the chart in Pat's presentation regarding funding, just a quick overview here of funding, basically, the airport manager, FBL, fixed-based operator pays to use the facility via the Airport Management Services Agreement, which you saw in the chart earlier, and this provides, the airport manager/fixed-based operator provides daily onsite management, and that part of the requirement of the agreement is that the airport manager is state-certified. The AMSA, the Fisherman's Storage Area, and hangar payments fund the Airport Revolving Fund, which basically provides resources for operational expenses and local match requirements. So, the Airport Revolving Fund was established back in 1996 by annual town meeting via Article 5. So, and when I started off the presentation, I noted the airport being established, recognized as part of the national aviation system. We've alluded to the funding mix, but basically, funding for airport infrastructure, navigation aids, and planning projects are typically eligible for airport improvement or AIP program funding, with 90% federal and 5% state funding match with a 5% town contribution. So, an AIP grant, some of the details of that, it basically, when the FAA refers to recipients of AIP grants as sponsors, a sponsor's eligibility to receive funds under the AIP program varies per the type of airport and the type of proposed project. In general, a sponsor may be a public agency, a private owner, or a state entity that is associated with a public-use airport. So, sponsors must be legally, financially, and otherwise able to carry out the insurances and obligations contained in the project application and grant agreement. So, the determination of the public sponsor representative is pursuant to the applicable jurisdictional and governing authority of the agency, and the sponsor eligibility and requirements are defined in Chapter 2 of the AIP Handbook. And just to point out, so again, going back to the chart a little bit, so the town manager's sponsor duties basically include that the sponsor's eligibility to receive funds under the AIP program in Chatham is the town manager via finance administrative authority conveyed in the charter. So, that also results from the, or results in the town manager being the signatory for applications, grants, and other FAA correspondence, compliance actions, et cetera, and a co-signatory for Airport Management Service Agreements and AMSA concession agreements. And just bringing this to a close, we can get to questions and answers, just basically, currently, there are no known current federal or state grant assurance violations, and as Pat Town Council pointed out, these are the various conditions of the grant awards. The FAA has reviewed and issued findings on multiple citizen assertions regarding federal GA, which is general aviation violations. None were identified. The FAA issued a document, and none were identified, back in January 2016. Past identified land use inspection compliance issues were addressed through a corrective action plan and resolved June of 2018, and efforts are currently underway to address identified land use, safety conflicts identified in the wildlife habitat assessment by initiating the Fisherman's Storage Area closure. So, in conclusion, hopefully, the recurring questions regarding airport governance have been addressed, including the FAA authority over air travel, aircraft, and regulation of noise, clarification of sponsor representatives, compliance with grant assurances, land use, navigation easements, the Chapter 90 and Charter relationship, and other questions. But with that, we're here to, I'll turn it back to the Chair for any questions and answers the Board may have.
Thank you, Terry, and thank you, Pat. Next, I'm going to open it up to the Select Board and then to the Airport Commission for any comments or questions, and then to the public. But before I go to the Board, I just want to make, Pat, I assume you're still there, right? I'm going to ask a couple of direct questions that come in directly to us, and it's probably going to, it's not going to be any different than what you said before, I don't think, but I'm going to put it in maybe plainer language for us. We get concerns from people who I respect greatly about the policy of the Select Board, the policy of the Select Board either to allow a commercial airport or not to allow a "commercial airport." And before we get into that, what's the, who's, what's the, either regulation or who decides what types of airplanes flies into the airport and what types of airplanes will be allowed into the airport? Because it kind of generates on that. If you have a charter airplane coming in, it is a commercial airport. And the point is, we don't want a larger airport, we don't want those airplanes coming in here, we don't want jets to come in here. And I guess I get to the fundamentals. Who decides who comes in? I mean, I have my thoughts, but I'll turn it over to you and maybe the Airport Commission might want to say something. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Generally speaking, the application of federal restrictions to the types of flights that can utilize in the airport is based on the physical characteristics of the airport, the length of the runways, et cetera. So, I believe that as a local matter, the Airport Commission can certainly establish priorities relative to the build-out and capacity of the airport to handle various types of flights. However, the ultimate determination as to what type of plane can fly into or out of Chatham Airport would, in my view, be a matter of FAA jurisdiction. I don't think the Board of Selectmen, per se, would have the immediate authority to limit or restrict the nature or types of flights that fly in and out of the airport, because under the express provisions of Section 51E, the airport, D, the Airport Commission has care, management, and control of the airport by general law. It is the body that ultimately has the authority to determine the nature and extent of improvements to the Chatham Airport.
Okay, thank you, Pat. The other is, just to reiterate what you said on easements, abrogation easements, you see that in a number of questions, and immediately, the public, because that's all they see, let's say, in an AMPU or whatever, is that there are going to be abrogation easements. I think we have a problem with clear airspace right now, potentially, with trees that may be in the area. But in general, if I understand what the Airport Commission has said, we don't have to go there first. There are, like you mentioned, there are a lot of ways to do it, and as simple as reaching out to the homeowners and discussing what tree is involved. Is that a fair statement, even under Chapter 100?
Yes, I believe that is a fair statement. You know, the FAA, in all likelihood, would like, would prefer that we acquire easements because it's a permanent and a fixed, if you will, interest in property, giving us more control over the land. Nonetheless, in my view, so long as the Airport Commission and our engineering consultants are satisfied that the condition of surrounding properties is such that there aren't any potential threats, either presently or in the future, to aviation activities at the airport, I would like to think that the FAA would be comfortable with us undertaking less intrusive means to assure that compliance, whether it be by, as noted earlier, enforcement of our Approach Bylaw, Chapter 100, or voluntary compliance upon notification, or compelling compliance with the Bylaw by court order. That doesn't result in the town taking anyone's property or any rights in anyone's property. But the FAA does have certain guidelines and certain standards that absolutely encourage and state its clear preference that easements, if not fee interests, be acquired by airport operators.
Okay, and the last one I have, I'm taking more time than I should, but I, has to do with noise, which is, I think that many of us on the Board have, you know, a quote of "relationship" with noise, but also have a sensitivity to a number of people that are closer or under the airport approach zone. And as you mentioned, there's plenty of case law out there that says, "Too bad, guys," but there's also other places where you see approaches being moved, but they're large airports. And it seems to me, I mean, not to get ahead of myself, but it seems to me, and what I've heard also on the Airport Commission, that maybe we could go to the FAA with a case, but we'd have to prove our case, and if you look at the pamphlet that was sent to us, there are a number of issues that would be involved as far as whether or not there was a real problem with noise. But, I mean, that's something that you can relate to, I mean, I lived by airports for a long time, and I don't hear anything anymore, I mean, as far as airplanes, because you get used to them. But if you do go in some areas of West Chatham and you stand outside, it can get pretty noisy. And this year, and I'm carrying on, but this year, we've had a lot more takeoff and landings than we have in previous years, especially when you think we had a COVID pandemic, we hardly had any airplanes in, although we had some. So, I guess I'm looking for the wiggle room you were talking about on noise, at least to help some of those people or try to get some of the issues on noise taken care of. And I understand airplanes in the air, too bad. I mean, there's nothing we can do about that. FAA has to do, and if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, then it's a question of a pilot, his license is under considerable duress if he is doing something out of the ordinary. I don't, well, we have people that have said that has happened, but I haven't seen that much. We're talking about plane noise now, and I'll be done.
Yes, you know, without question, Mr. Chair, noise is one of the unpleasant side effects of an airport, but I think we can all agree it's somewhat unavoidable to a large degree. The controls that the local airport commission would have would be reconfiguration of airport runways, relocation of runways. Obviously, to do that, you need sufficient available land to reconfigure or modify approach and zones so that they don't directly fly over, you know, residential areas and so forth. I'm not an engineer, I don't know what the options for the CQX are in that regard. I would suggest, I would suspect, I should say, that they're somewhat limited. But as you noted, Mr. Chair, once the aircraft is airborne and it's in federal airspace, we don't really have much, if any, authority over that. As I noted earlier, even attempts to, by airport operators throughout the country to regulate the times within which planes could land and depart have met with resistance from the FAA and have been challenged in court. So, it's a difficult road aho. I think that the primary control that a local airport operator would have would be configuration and construction of airport facilities to minimize noise impacts to the greatest degree possible. Beyond that, the pickings are slim in terms of our legal options.
No, I understand. Thank you very much. I saw Dean's hand up first. We have, I'm going to go to the Board. First, Dean, and anybody else who wants to speak, and then we'll go to the Airport Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pat, I wanted to talk about three different areas. One is sponsorship, then eminent domain, and then the town bylaw. At the December 1st meeting, in several places during that meeting, you made the following points, and I wanted to just ask if these are points that you would confirm, because I think this evening you may have touched on them only tangentially. In defining who the sponsor of the airport is, you said that the town of Chatham is the sponsor, acting by and through the Airport Commission. You said that on a couple of occasions. You said that the Airport Commission plays the primary role on behalf of the town with respect to the airport, and that the Select Board does not supersede or usurp the Airport And that the Select Board had limited purview over the Airport Commission, and you gave a couple of examples, one of which you touched on tonight, and that is with respect to legal compliance. compliance. And the other example you gave was in the appointing authority of the commissioners by the select board. So I, I took from that that the sponsor is not the select board. We're not the, we're not the sponsor. The Airport Commission is not the sponsor. It's the town. It's the, it's the municipal corporation acting in this area by and through the Airport Commission. Is that, have I summed up your position correctly?
I do think that that's substantially correct, Dean, is my position. The, what the, the applicable federal guidelines and regulations provide is that, for example, the FAA assurance guidelines specifically state that, and I quote, "As used herein, the term 'public agency sponsor' means a public agency with control of a public use airport." Public agency sponsor is, is the board or officer authority within a town that has the legal authority to apply for grants and to finance and carry out projects within the airport. As I noted earlier, under the, the express provisions of, of Chapter 90, Section 151D at SEC, the Airport Commission is the agency of the town of Chatham that has, in my view, the legal authority to control the Chatham Airport and to carry out the purposes for which federal grants are issued for the airport. So I guess to succinctly say it and hopefully clearly say it, the sponsor of the Chatham Municipal Airport is the town of Chatham, acting by and through its Airport Commission.
Okay, thank you. I want to turn to eminent domain. You distinguished the eminent domain authority that is allowed to the Airport Commission under Chapter 90 from the eminent domain authority that is given to the select board under Section 14 of, is that Chapter 79?
Chapter 40, Section 40.
Chapter 40. And when I first saw that issue joined in some emails recently, I thought, well, perhaps there's concurrent authority on, on the part of both the select board and the Airport Commission to take, take property by eminent domain for an airport, for airport purposes. Or perhaps a select board can take property by eminent domain for such purposes when you don't have an air, you have an airport but don't have an airport commission.
That's correct.
But you, you made clear that in the case where there is an airport commission, it is not concurrent authority. Am I understanding you correctly, that it's exclusive to the Airport Commission? The select board does not take property by eminent domain, including easements. Only the Airport Commission can.
That is how I construe the statutes, Dean, read in their entirety. There, I, I think there are three statutory provisions that relate to the acquisition of easements for the purposes of a public airport. There's the base provision of, of Chapter 40, Section 14, to which you just alluded, which basically says that the Board of Selectmen of a town can exercise the right of eminent domain to acquire property for any municipal purpose, and I quote, "For which the purchase or taking of land, easement, or right therein is not otherwise authorized or directed by statute." So I think that last clause basically would exclude from the Board of Selectmen's authority the right to acquire interests in property for airport purposes because that right is otherwise expressly authorized or directed by the provisions of general laws, Chapter 90, Section 51G. There is one other provision of law, Chapter 90, Section 40G, which does allow the selectmen in towns to acquire interest in real property where the public interest so requires for the protection of approaches to publicly owned airports. Now, whether the, the airports are owned by the town or not, I view that provision as more of a general public safety enabling provision that authorizes selectmen in towns where public airports exist to protect the safety of its citizens and properties surrounding or in the vicinity of the airports by acquiring appropriate approach zone protection easements. Notwithstanding that provision of law, there is express language in Section 51G that specifically authorizes the Airport Commission to acquire such easements and airport hazards outside the boundaries of an airport or airport site as may be necessary for the removal or the prevention of the establishment of any airport hazard. So if you read the provisions of Section 51G, which vests in the Airport Commission the right to acquire such hazard prevention easements and the rights granted to the, a Board of Selectmen in Section 40G to acquire easements for that purpose, one could offer a compelling argument that there is concurrent jurisdiction in that regard, but it, it would have seemed to me that where the town of, of Chatham has decided to go the route of creating and appointing an airport commission to oversee and control the operation of the airport, that that right would be most appropriately and consistent with the legislative intent established in the statutes be vested in the Airport Commission.
What is that Site 40G of Chapter what?
Chapter 90, Section 40G.
Okay. With respect to eminent domain takings, whether they're for fee or easements, they have to be compensated under Chapter 79, as you point out. And the money for that is going to have to come as a practical matter unless the Airport Commission devises some scheme to, to increase its funding substantially. Right now, it has only about $40,000 that comes in. The funding for, for that is going to have to come from grant, from the FAA and the state. The FAA contributing 90%, the state 5%, but it requires a 5% match from the town. So am I, and maybe this is better answered by the Airport Commission, but my, my thinking right along since we first heard about aviation easements, I think almost two years ago, was that there is considerable control over the taking of, the potential taking of aviation easements on the part of the Board of Selectmen because, the select board, because that 5% match has to go to town meeting and, and on our warrant. We can put it on town meeting warrant or not at the, if the, if the Airport Commission requests it. We could put it on the town meeting warrant with a negative recommendation. It could get a negative recommendation from the Finance Committee, but ultimately it would be up to the voters whether, whether to appropriate that match. And if that match is not appropriated, I don't, am I correct? I don't think the feds are going to give the 90% and the state's not going to give the, the 5%. So it would be a fruitless land taking on the part of the Airport Commission to proceed without that assurance that we're going to get the 5% from town meeting. Is that an effective analysis?
I think that's a fair analysis. You're, you're absolutely correct that as a matter of constitutional law, we cannot appropriate or acquire interest in private property for a public purpose without paying the property owner a fair compensation for that which is acquired and for any damage that results to the property as a result of the, the taking. There are substantial sums available through the federal government and perhaps in some cases through state government programs that could facilitate the funding of such easements, but to my knowledge, there is typically, if not universally, always a local hook to that and a local match amount that would have to be raised and appropriated through the, the town processes, which, as you noted, is primarily town meeting. So what you indicated, Dean, in terms of the level of control or ultimate final say that the Board of Selectmen would have on placing articles on the warrant could very well be a factor with regard to those match amounts. And if the match amounts are not appropriated, based on my experience, most of the federal funding matches would likewise not be available for utilization by the Airport Commission.
And one last question on eminent domain. Having tried eminent domain cases myself, but a long time ago, so I, but I assume the process is largely the same. Easements are interests in land, so they're subject to, to the protections of Chapter 79, as you point out, and you can file a complaint in court either to challenge the legality of the taking if you think it's not for a public purpose, or more likely to challenge the amount of money that you think is owed to you, having obtained your own appraisal perhaps. So these are evaluated according to the effect on the property of, of the taking, of the, the restriction that the easement may cause, and they're not all going to be the same. One property may require the removal of a, one tree. One may require the removal of a manmade structure. So they will all have to be evaluated, and the common procedure, although it's not legally required, is, is that the appraiser is, does a before and after. He evaluates the, he values the, the worth of the property before the taking, and then he takes a look, he or she takes a look at it afterward and subtracts, and that's, that's the damages. And they use comparable sales, or sales of comparable properties in recent times. So that's, that's a process. That would be comparable to how you would value, the process would be comparable to how, as to how you would value a utility easement that the telephone company or the electric company might need to run lines in your, in your backyard, for example. I think, I suspect if most people looked at the deeds to their houses, I know it in my property, there is an old New England telephone and telegraph easement, and they exercised it a couple of years ago without telling me by chopping down several hedges. So they made good on it, by the way. I want to turn to Chapter 100, the bylaw, because I have consistently advocated over the last two years that this is the, this is the tool that the Airport Commission should use in the first instance, working collaboratively with the property owner and providing some compensation to the extent that it's in order. But I had, and, and it, as you point out, it's not an easement. The, but the bylaw expressly says it's not the exercises of eminent domain, it's the exercise of the police power. There are a couple of questions here. You point out that the, the plan that was put on, that was included in the town meeting vote in 1958, it's part of the bylaw, I guess.
It is.
That should be updated because the bylaw could only be used within the confines of that airport approach, okay? And that would, that would require an action of town meeting to do that.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. I just wondered, there's a concept in eminent domain called a taking and pay, which is basically an informal taking when, when the taking authority hasn't really gone through the Chapter 79 steps, but they've effectively taken a portion of your property or, or an interest in your property. Do you think that Chapter 100 could be subject to legal challenge that it amounts to a taking and pay or, or whatever term is appropriate for it?
Yeah, a, a taking and pay, as you noted, Dean, is, is generally an appropriation of land by a public authority for a public purpose without adoption of a formal order of taking. So certainly an argument could be proffered that enforcement of a regulation that resulted in a diminution in value of property without fair compensation could be challenged as a, as a taking and pay. Then again, there's another body of case law that says it's within the authority and power of a town, of a town through its police powers to regulate the use of, of certain properties to advance the public health, safety, and welfare. I certainly think that the Approach Protection Bylaw is such a bylaw. It does state as its, that as its express underlying purpose, and an argument could be countered to a taking and pay argument that, no, this is an appropriate exercise of police power by the town.
Do you think that the law would accord a presumption of validity to Chapter 100 because it was enacted by town meeting and presumably, I don't know what the procedure was back in 1958?
1958.
Approved by the Attorney General?
I think so, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dean.
Shereen?
Hi, Pat. How are you?
Hi, Shereen.
I want to go back to a little bit of what Dean was just talking about, the public safety, health, and welfare issue, and whether that can apply to the noise issues that people are feeling, are dealing with in town. I'd be interested to know, you said that there's very few instances where operational hours are, are reduced or, or managed due to the noise issues throughout the country, but there are instances where there have been reduced hours. And I was just wondering if any of that language could apply to, to the noise issue and if you have any more information on, you know, how other communities might have gone about getting, you know, operational hours reduced to mitigate some of the noise.
I think, Shereen, it really comes down to the specific circumstances relating to each airport and, and the, and the willingness of the FAA, quite frankly, to concede its, its purview over, over that particular issue. One key term in the regulations is noise at the source is, is within the FAA's purview. Presumably, noise generated directly by aircraft while they're in flight, I think would be pretty tough to regulate. But if there was particular circumstances relating to the town and, and particular proof of damage or harm caused by noise, we would need that as a very, as a basis to, to assert any right to, to utilize police powers to regulate noise. Otherwise, I think it would be a very difficult task.
Wouldn't you say that having the airport in the middle of the town is an unusual circumstance? It's not like we have an outlying area where the airport is. I mean, wouldn't the, I mean, I'm just wondering if the FAA would look at it from that perspective, that, you know, here's, here's the airport in the middle of the town?
Yeah, well, by analogy, I've lived in two Boston neighborhoods, my life, that are directly under the flight paths of Logan Airport, and granted, a different animal, but I know there have been numerous lawsuits brought by folks under the flight, flight path of Logan that, that claim that, you know, they are nuisances in essence. And I don't believe they've been successful. I think what, what has happened in a few instances, the FAA has been prompted to work with local airport operators to review flight plans and flight paths to see if there would be some way to diminish or minimize the noise impacts. But I, I don't see how we could unilaterally successfully curtail flight operations to minimize noise without some significant level of input and cooperation from the FAA.
Thanks, Pat.
Corey, sort of follow up. Hi, Pat. I'm going to follow up on that theme, because I've been thinking about it, the noise being an issue. And it says, you know, "Local governments may not adopt noise abatement controls that impinge upon aircraft operations." That assumes that the operations of that, of the aircraft are appropriate for the airport. I think there's been some discussion about the Chatham Airport CQX and what is, what is the threshold, what, what is appropriate and what is, may outgrow the safety elements and runway lengths and and runway lengths and et cetera of the, of Chatham. So, and with the federal government spending 90% of the funds on any project, I guess, philosophically, I don't see why they don't take this more of a regional approach and figure out, okay, this is, you know, CQX has certain thresholds, certain operations, hours, et cetera, are appropriate, allowed by right to operate through CQX. And then you have, you know, a Marshall Airport 15 or 19 miles, whatever the actual mileage is, very close by, that's not going to impinge on a lot of elements of certain aircraft that make more sense from a safety, air traffic, you know, that is the conversation, I think, that might necessarily want to have, because it's not, it's not reaching for it, it's just saying, we have, you know, two airports within a certain time, you know, span of each other, this facility is better equipped for this, and this facility is better equipped for that, and it just makes better operations from a regional approach. And I don't think that's really stretching it that far. So I think that's the conversation that we may want to consider having to address some of the noise concerns that the public does have, because I think it's an argument that we might have some, you know, bases on, to be honest with you. So, you know, I recognize the input on the airport is different from different, you know, perspectives. Those who live within, under the airport, especially those who've lived there for a long time, have seen the evolution of the airport, so they can give you better input about what has occurred over the years. But this is more about governance. You know, I want to listen to the public. The one thing I do want to ask on, and I forgive this, forgive throwing this question out, is it's not something that I originally thought about playing, playing out tonight, but I, timing wise, it kind of, I got hit up with a curveball yesterday, and I'm just gonna set the foundation for a future conversation, it looks like. So Fisherman Storage Area, that was part of the element of funds raised for the Airport Commission. That is going to expire, and someone can give me the dates, relatively shortly.
Yeah.
I do know, because I was, the reason I'm asking this question is, I was approached by some of the individuals who use that area, and they were asking the mechanics of, well, this is going to expire, and we're gonna be out in the next year, and, you know, there is no place for us to go, how do we appeal it? And mechanics, the governance, this is what the conversation is tonight, is through the Airport Commission and Town Manager. Would that be correct? Because the Board of Selectmen technically don't play a role in that element. Because I am setting the foundation, I do believe they're gonna be, we, the town, is gonna get reached out to and ask for some kind of temporary stay on that element. So I guess, while we're having the conversation today, can you comment about what's the mechanical path for anyone like that who would want to take to have that discussion?
Sure. I think it's pretty clear that under Chapter 90, Corey, the Airport Commission has authority relative to the rental and use of airport property. So to the extent that the Fisherman Storage Area is clearly on airport property, the Airport Commission would be the body to which they should appeal.
Okay. So that, so heads up, guys, I think that's coming through the pipes pretty soon. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. That's it for the board. Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I thank Attorney Costello, and Terry, and others that have contributed here this evening to, I think, a very enlightening conversation on governance, on eminent domain, on control, and on authority in our airport. The noise issue is a tough one. I have one, and I think the question's been answered, I'm gonna ask it again, because it's what I hear from folks that call me via email traffic, but what, who controls the type and size of aircraft that land at Chatham Airport? Who's, under whose authority are those aircraft allowed to land and take off?
My, my understanding, Jeff, is that it relates to the physical capacity of the airport, the, primarily the runway length. I mean, perhaps Gail could shed some more light on that, under the federal regulations. But my understanding, from what I've read and what I've seen, is that so long as a particular type of airport, aircraft, I'm sorry, can land and take off and maneuver safely within the confines of the physical layout and runway of the airport, that it can't be prohibited from using that airport. I would stand to be corrected if the engineers have more information on that point.
Okay, so if the FAA and the Airport Commission and the FAA believe that a plane can safely land and take off at our airport, they're allowed in and out. Is that a fair statement?
That's my understanding, yes.
And typically, or at least in the last couple of years or so, those airplanes have gotten a little larger and a little noisier. I do live directly into the flight path in West Chatham, and I've enjoyed the airport all my life, since I've lived here since 1976 full-time. So I do not have an issue with the noise at the airport. I hear it all the time. Frankly, I blank it out, and at times, I really don't even hear it, because I'm so used to it. But I understand that it can be tough for folks that perhaps live a little higher up than I do, and the flight paths get a little closer to their abode. So anyway, and the other, the other point I wanted to emphasize is Selectman Castro's approach to Chapter 100. I do think that is an avenue of potential collaboration between points of contention in terms of height of trees and or clearing that needs to take place. I think, I think I would personally support a more collaborative approach than one that ends up in courts and costs lots of money for both residents and towns alike. So I think that's a point to emphasize, and it's one to kind of bring forward as we move forward here. But I really enjoyed the conversations, very enlightening, and I'm glad we had it. And I applaud Selectman Kokolas for bringing it forward as a single item. I think with so doing, he's emphasized its importance to this board and to the town as well. And I certainly look forward to hearing from the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. That leads me into something I was gonna say before I turn it over to Huntley and the Airport Commission. The whole idea, the point of tonight, was not, not to be arguing among ourselves with lawsuits, is for us to understand who's in charge. Who can say yes to changes if we try to go after them? And as you heard, and my understanding, is FAA is very much involved. They're the guys we have to go to. This board is not afraid to talk to federal agencies. We have discussions with the Coast Guard now on a number of issues, we, the U.S. Wildlife and Fish Service. We finally, after, I don't know how many boards, two or three boards, in this year, we have an MOU with them on an understanding of what we can do. So the, I understand how people can read, and they have an opinion. We have an opinion from our counsel, and to me, I understand what he's saying. So if that's the case, then arguing among ourselves isn't gonna get us anywhere. The Airport Commission nor the Select Board can come, can say, no more turboprops can fly in here, no more charters can fly in here. We can't do that unless we go to the FAA and make a case. I think we'd have a tough time there, but I still believe there might be a way to get around some of the noise issues, potentially. I mean, you know, but that's, that's, that's a question the Airport Commission, I mean, we've discussed it with them a number of times, and I'll leave it up to them. But anyway, Huntley, I'll turn it over to the Airport Commission, and you can run that, and when you're done, just bring it back, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Kokolas. As I was listening tonight, I just want to say that I concur with just about everything that Mr. Costello had to say. I would like to add some things, and at the beginning, Mr. Galen and I decided, and it just came up, with regard to the types of aircraft. So he and I were talking about the types of airplanes that can come in there, and I'd like him to elaborate. I thought he had some good ideas on that, and I'd like him to speak to that.
Thank you, Huntley. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of Select Board, and Pat. Essentially, it's real simple. If the plane can operate at an airport, it can land and take off there. And in the case of Chatham, it's if it can handle a 3,001-foot runway and weighs less than 30,000 pounds, it's eligible to use the airport. Now, we're not, we're a non-commercial scheduled airport, so it would also have to have fewer than 10 seats or 10 occupants, which means virtually any charter, air taxi, or fractional-owned aircraft that meets those physical compliance is eligible to land and take off and operate in this airport. And that's, you know, it's gotta be certified for those things, and that's what operates here. And yes, over the years, things like turboprops, small jets, can now manage those kind of conditions.
The other, the other topics we talked about was, were noise and easements. I'll do noise first, and then I'll get to easements. With regard to noise, I have been working with Tim Howard, the airport manager, and talking with him, to encourage local pilots to abide by the fly-friendly brochure that we have. Certainly, transient pilots are more difficult to regulate. With regard to noise, they're in and out, and if we don't know, they've, you know, we can't hear them when they're coming in. And so, you know, if we, if we get a complaint, and it's a local pilot, we can certainly speak to that, if, again, if we know who it is. But again, the transient pilots and the, and the other aircraft that come in, our hands are pretty much tied with regard to curfews and things like that, and time limitations. The FAA sets very high parameters on noise with regard to numbers of aircraft that come in. You have to have a pretty large number of aircraft coming in. It's usually those noise issues that they deal with are not for airports that have the type of traffic we do, or the numbers of aircraft that land at Chatham. It would be very, very difficult for us to convince the FAA to set limits regardless of where the aircraft is, you know, whether it's in town or, which ours is, or elsewhere. But I think those parameters that they set are very difficult to, to hit for a, an airport the size of ours with the amount of traffic that we have. I mean, we can certainly, you know, ask, there's no harm in asking about that, but I don't think we'd ever hit that threshold where they would say, oh, yes, of course, you have too much traffic, and the type of aircraft you have coming in there would warrant a time limitation on those aircraft.
Yeah, you're, you're not gonna talk, you're, okay.
I'm done for that.
Okay. No, I kind of understand that, and I understand where you're coming from, and I was, this hasn't changed in a lot of years, when I was involved many years ago. I guess, the, well, it's something that I would recommend you look at. I mean, we talked about it, you were thinking of doing some sort of a forum, not a forum, I don't know, you had a name for, at the airport, for certain issues, and that's, that's probably something to bring up, because you just never know the issues that some people underneath the approach pattern might have, you know, in West Chatham or the other side. And each, each, each end of the runway is different, of course.
Right.
And speaking of that, and the approaches, you know, the approaches that are being proposed are proposed, and the FAA will determine what, what approaches are going to be, what the, what the airport will have. Just because you put in a recommended generalized instrument landing with vertical distance, you know, it's still FAA is gonna decide what, what's gonna happen, and that would, that would also, I would think, have a, have an indication of how many trees you may have to be involved with. And so, it's kind of up to them. But I get it, I just, you know, I'm just, it's, it's, noise is always an issue, and some people, some people are more sensitive to it than others. There are places in West Chatham, airplanes are coming over, you know, a number of times, and if they're on takeoff, I don't know, this may be a, I'm not a lawyer, you know, when they're taking off, they're under 500 feet, so they're climbing out up to 500 feet. So there's that distance in between that maybe there's an issue with some houses or something. I'm stretching it, but I doubt it, but, you know, I thought.
Well, our rules, the way the rules are set now, we ask the pilots to take off, they have to take off at full power.
Yeah.
That's for safety reasons. And, and we ask them, as soon as it is safe to do so, to come back on that power as they're departing.
Yeah.
And fly straight out, and if they're going off on runway 24, as soon as they get over the water, that's up to them, once they're out there. But, you know, there's, there's an area, they come off under full power, and then they can reduce that power once they get to a certain altitude that's safe, because if they have an engine failure, they have to be able to get back to the airport. So, you know, that's, that's part of that. You know, with regard to other noise issues on landing, you know, you mentioned the approaches that were proposing. The proposed approaches are supposed to be, they're straight-in approaches at lower power, so the airplanes coming in will be quieter, that's what we're hoping for with that. Those would be for the, well, they can be for any time, but especially for instrument situations where they have to come in when the weather's not as good as it should be. But they would be quieter. The only time something like that might not work is if they have to have a missed approach and have to apply full power and go somewhere else, which actually happened the other night. I just was, happened to hear an airplane coming in, and I thought this was odd, because it was a relatively bad night, I think it was raining. And the, it was a PC-12, and he came in, he tried the approach, he didn't make it, he did a missed approach, went to Hyannis. And that's what they do, if they, if they can't get in. He might, he might have tried a second time, I didn't notice it on the, on the FlightAware software that I was using. What I saw, that he, he went right away, he did the missed approach right away. So, so those are the kinds of things that you might have with, you know, a louder noise because of a missed approach. If we take away the non-directional beacon, we're not gonna have the circling approaches anymore. I know there've been instances of that, where, in fact, I know of one a week or so ago, where a pilot was trying to get in and circle the town several times, trying to keep an eye on the airport. And he finally did find a, an opening and got in. But those are the kinds of things that will be eliminated with these new approaches. So I, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that the, we can get, get those approved by the FAA and designed appropriately. Yeah, I think, I, that's all I can really say about, about that. I do have, I do have more on easements, though.
Oh, go ahead. Might as well. I mean, because I'm gonna turn it over to the public when you're done.
Right. The public has heard me say on several occasions that, as far as I am concerned, easements or eminent domain is the last thing we'd want to do. The FAA typically, as we've heard, they like the easement approach. The way we would like to approach it, and I'm working with Mr. Karen from Gail Associates on how we're going to do this, we've started our conversation on how we're going to approach property owners, and we're laying out a plan in order to do this. My idea would hopefully be to talk to them about voluntary removal of trees, perhaps with some financial help from, from the, from, you know, the airport, but may, I don't know. The one thing, the one proviso that I would have on a voluntary approach would be that, and this may sound like an easement, I don't know, I'd have to talk to Mr. Costello about it, but to put in a document that Mr. and Mrs. XYZ, whatever, Smith, is going to remove these trees voluntarily, but they will maintain the property at that level without other trees on the property encroaching on the approach space. And then, when that piece of property changes ownership, should it change ownership at some point in the future, that something, we'd have to have something in writing that would carry over to the new owner, so that, you know, trees keep growing. And something would have to carry over to the new owner to say, yes, we will keep this And something would have to carry over to the new owner to say, yes, we will keep this. And I'm hoping that Chapter 100 of the town bylaw would help us there because that's in place, that's something that we can use. The, we, we talked a little bit earlier about the 5% match and whether or not, you know, that could be something that we may not be able to afford. And I would agree with that. We may not be able to afford a 5% match. The situation there is that a denial of the 5% match would do two things. It would violate the town's responsibility with regard to the grant assurances. Because we have to, we have to manage the, you know, the grant assurances. That's a promise. That's a contract we have made with the FAA to accept those federal funds. Any denial of that, I think, would cause great repercussions with the FAA going forward and funding. So I think it would be something we'd really have to think about. I, I worry about that. I, I, you know, perhaps our funding through the hangar leases and certainly as the time moves out, 2027, we're going to have another set of hangars providing income for the Airport Commission. We've got income now from the hangars that we have. It's considerably more than what Mr. Nacastro mentioned. And could we meet that match tomorrow? Based on the, the CIP plan that we'll, I'll be talking about at the next commission meeting, the Airport Improvement Plan going forward, we could meet, meet that 5% match right now if we had to. Now, could we, if it, if it, could we do two of them? I don't know. Possibly. So, you know, I, I, I do worry about that. And I understand that the, the, the town meeting is obviously very critical, and you could say that we're not going to put it on the warrant. But again, I go back, have to think about that because of the grant assurances. Okay? Oh, by the way, and Mr. Matters, with regard to the fish storage issue, thank you. I'm working on it.
I was just approached yesterday, so it just hit my radar, so.
I know. But it's been on, it's been, believe me, it's been on my radar and, I, I'm not going to say anything tonight because I'm still working on it.
Okay. Dean has his hand up.
No.
Okay, Dean.
Just take 30 seconds because I know the public wants to speak. Just with respect to the 5%. I introduced that idea not as a club on the Airport Commission, but a check that is institutional within the town on, in the hands of town meeting. If, in fact, we thought that the Airport Commission wasn't paying enough attention to the voluntary or Chapter 100, or Bylaw 100 approach, which you've indicated you wanted to do, that's where I was coming from on that.
Okay, yeah. I mean, that, that Chapter 100, I hope, is the way we can proceed.
No, I appreciate what you said.
I don't want to do easements if I don't have to.
I like what you said. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just before you go on.
Go ahead, Huntley.
Are any other commissioners, do they have anything to say? Want to get up and say anything? We're good? Okay, thank you.
Just to reiterate what Huntley said, no, our intention is not the easement or any of that route. Yeah, the FAA has told us that's how they want us to go. And we don't get a dime from the FAA if we, if we go another route. But there's no question it would be foolish and wasteful financially if we had to go that route. And Dean, just for clarity, we've got about $100,000 annual income right now revenue-wise, based on the hangar money, and that'll increase by another about $50,000, $55,000 in 2027. So, just informational.
I see, I see our engineer from Gale is on the screen there. Matt, do you have anything you want to add to either the easement conversation, the noise conversation, or types of airplanes?
Hey, Huntley. Nope, I think I'm good. I think you guys have everything covered.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll turn it over to, back to you.
Thank you very much, Huntley and Mike. Yeah, do we have anybody in the public that'd like to speak? I see somebody getting up. Mr. Fulton, even behind the mask, I recognize you. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all of you.
There we go. Thank you. Thanks to all of you for holding this meeting, and thank you, Pat Costello, for enlightening us. I just want to say I agree with much of what Attorney Costello has stated tonight. There are a few areas in which I do not believe, and I believe that he is mistaken. I do not believe that the Airport Commission has any power of eminent domain with respect to the Chatham Airport under Chapter 9051G. There, as I have shared with Attorney Costello, who may or may not still be with us, eminent domain statutes are strictly and narrowly construed. Selectman Nacastro can tell you what that means. That means the words mean exactly what they say, and you do not depart from them. 51G says that the Airport Commission has powers of eminent domain in two instances. There are two prerequisites. Number one, it has to be for the purpose of establishing an airport. And secondly, when appropriations have been made, therefore. Selectman Nacastro, I'd like to thank you for your astute observation that a warrant article not endorsing a 5% appropriation, I, I think would be quite appropriate. And I hope you will consider that strongly. If you don't, I want to ask a rhetorical, rhetorical question of you. You don't have to answer it. Now, how many of you believe that the public will vote in favor of that? And then after the meeting, I'll ask you, how many of you believe in the tooth fairy? 40G of Chapter 90 specifically says, what, what Gale Associates is doing now, they are recommending navigation easements to protect approaches. Chapter 90, Section 40G specifically says, in the, in the, if it, in any case in which in the opinion of the selectmen of a town, the approaches need protection, then the power of eminent domain may be exercised to take navigation easements. It's very clear, the courts are going to strictly and narrowly construe these two statutes. And it's going to say, okay, if you're establishing an airport, it's the Airport Commission. If you're protecting approaches like Gale Associates is recommending, it's the Board of Selectmen who have the power. That is, that is abundantly clear. I agree with what Attorney Costello has said about federal preemption of the noise, of noise issues. I have read the Burbank case and all the other cases that have, have held that. However, Attorney Costello did allude, I believe, to land use powers under the police power. And I'd like to read specifically what it says in Grant Assurance Number 22, which is consistent with what case law says. "The airport sponsor may prohibit or limit any given type, kind, or class of aeronautical use of the airport if such action is reasonable and necessary for the safe operation of the airport." Shereen, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your sensitivity to the noise problem. And I want to suggest to you, there's a way to get to the promised land, not through a noise regulation which is preempted, but through a safety regulation. You see, the runway protection zones of the Chatham Airport are grossly inadequate. The other day, up in Provincetown, we had an airplane that overshot the runway by 1,000 feet. If that guy had been landing in Chatham and overshot 1,000 feet, he either would have plowed directly through Ocean State Job Lot, which is only 500 feet from the end of the runway, or he would have crashed into the fuel pumps at Meservee Shell Station if he just pulled a little bit to the right, because that's within about 950 feet from the runway. So inadequate runway protection zones are a real safety problem here in Chatham. With all due respect, it's a problem that the Airport Commission has ignored. I would like to explore with you the possibility of drafting up a safety provision by law, which can be done in the form of a warrant article, which would ban type-two aircraft from landing at the Chatham Airport because of the inadequacy of the runway protection zones. Do you know how many people are going to be killed? A type-two aircraft is a Pilatus. It's, it's a big aircraft. You know how many people might be?
Getting close, you're over three a lot. But I, I get, you get your point. But please.
I, I really think that we should explore together a way to solve the noise problem through an incidental measure, a safety measure. And I think the federal government says that's something that the sponsor is allowed to do. And we should take it up with the FAA. I agree with you, Pete. We should, I'm, I'm so glad you have a relationship with federal authorities because we would want to confer with them every step of the way in attempting to solve both of these problems. Once again, I think there's confusion between what is an navigation easement and a clearance easement. Gale Associates is not stupid. They are recommending navigation easements, and the reason they're doing it is because they know that simply enforcing the tree height by law doesn't give the right of aircraft to invade airspace within 500 feet above ground level, as you alluded to, Mr. Chairman. They, you need to invade that airspace to land at the Chatham Airport. So you need an navigation easement to do it.
Jim, you have somebody waiting behind you.
Okay, I just have one last thing to say. All of these things, all these ideas and, and threatened exercises of power are, are very likely to result in litigation. For 43 years, I have counseled municipal clients in the field of litigation avoidance, and I would like to counsel you to do the same. And there's one thing you can do to avoid a hell of a lot of litigation, and that's to embrace the idea of displacing the thresholds at the Chatham Airport. I disagree with Chairman Harrison, who thinks that those, that displaced thresholds could not be enforced, they could easily be enforced, and they are enforced at other airports. And, boy, that would save an awful lot of trouble, solve a lot of obstruction problems, and avoid a lot of litigation.
Mr. Chair, we have someone on the Teams meeting who would like to make a comment.
I had, let me, let's see, I see one, yeah, he's, I'm going to go out on, onto Teams, the individual, Mr. Levitt, it looks like, he's been on for quite a while. Okay, Rick, go ahead, and then we'll get to you.
Thank you, Peter. Am I live?
You are.
Well, I certainly appreciate this detailed legal analysis tonight. It was very carefully and thoroughly presented. But I'm concerned with the airport's impact on West Chatham Village development and the people living there. My remarks are addressed to you, the Select Board, regarding airport governance. West Chatham Village is a valuable town asset threatened by, by the airport's expanding footprint. The Airport Commission recently asked the planning board to stop development in a large area of West Chatham Village. Nothing was said about this tonight. Worse, if you approve the Airport Commission's proposed plan to accommodate large Pilatus commercial aircraft to land and take off in the fog and rain, development in a much larger area of West Chatham Village will be stopped, affecting dozens of homeowners in the area and development of critically needed affordable housing for Chatham working families. With FAA, I understand the legal niceties with FAA over airport governance, but you have solid precedent, you, the Board of Selectmen, have solid precedent for asserting local home rule. Your strong spirit of independence asserted recently and successfully when negotiating Montomoy governance with another federal agency, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. You succeeded then in asserting home rule by speaking up for local interests, local fishing, shell fishing, and recreational interests. It is not in Chatham's interest to have a large commercial passenger planes frequently operating at Chatham Airport. Public opinion favors limiting airport operations to small, private planes traditionally operating at Chatham Airport. It is in Chatham's interest to end airport mission creep. The place for expanded airport operations is at nearby Hyannis Regional Airport. Chatham Airport's FAA-mandated runway protection zone belongs on undeveloped airport property where it was before the runway was extended decades ago. Zoning designation, zoning designating West Chatham as a village center predated runway extension, pushing the RPZ into West Chatham. The RPZ does not belong in West Chatham Village where, where it will create large dead zones. You can, you, the Board of Selectmen, can decide to limit the runway length and put the RPZ.
Okay. Rick, I lost you, but you asked over three minutes. He must have his own timer. Thank you, Rick.
Mr. Chairman, so do you want to go live audience member, Teams member?
Yeah, let me do that because Mr. Buckley put his hand up, and I promised the speaker, I mean, the next person that he'd be available.
The person at the podium.
Yeah, person at the podium. Yeah, let's do that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll finish up what he got cut off saying, because I agree with his position, which is that it's the Select Board's obligation to defend the people of Chatham
from what the Airport Commission is trying to sneak through. So my problem with tonight's presentation by the Town Council is it was completely ahistorical. He was saying, well, the FAA, you know, this is the way things are, the FAA has control over everything. But what he didn't recognize, and the reason that the public has risen up suddenly in the last two years about the airport, is because the Airport Commission is trying to sneak through major policy change in what that airport is going to be like. And we've already seen it this year. Many more flights of large commercial planes. It's no longer the small cute planes of, of local residents out to have a good time. But it's, it's, so the AMPU, which is what started the whole public discussion... But it's, so the AMPU, which is what started the whole public discussion, and the other documents that the Airport Commission has snuck through, like the Airport Layout Plan, which I just discovered on their site, proposes a whole bunch of different approaches that have drastic consequences for the character of the airport. These are policy issues to change the character of the airport that's in the middle of our vacation land, our retirement land. It's not a place for a commercial airport. That's back in Hyannis, as everyone keeps saying. So if you look at the Airport Layout Plan, for instance, you see that it proposes in very sort of technical ways, through diagrams, and no text at all to explain any of it, but different approach surfaces. So planes now, and this will allow planes, big planes, to come in at night in bad weather and so on. This is a major change in the policy of the airport. We, you know, we'd like to not have planes at night. These changes will bring in the noisy big planes all through the night, because it allows these approaches, instrument-led approaches and so on. One thing about the approaches that are in the Airport Layout Plan is that in addition to the 20-to-1, which is now the way the planes come in, so we've recognized that the planes are under 500 feet over my house, for instance, because it's taking off. And it's taking off, starting at the end of the runway, going up one foot every 20 feet out it goes. But the new approaches are 1 to 30 and 1 to 40. A 1 to 40 approach means that big plane, when it's coming in at midnight, is twice as close to my house as the planes in the past have been. Okay? A 1 to 40 approach goes down twice as close to the houses. It also means the trees that are only half the height of the trees that the easements were going to hit now have to be cut down. So it's going to be not a reduction of easements from 46 to 22, or whatever the numbers that have been thrown around have been, but many more easements are going to be required with a 1 to 40 surface. And that document was put through, as far as I know, there was no review of it publicly. It wasn't announced publicly, and I don't think the Select Board even looked at it, as far as I can tell. It was signed off by the manager of the airport and by one person on the AC. And it was signed off last summer, during the pandemic, when, as far as I know, the AC wasn't even meeting. So even they probably didn't review it. It went right to the FAA. The FAA immediately approved it, because the FAA would like to see that kind of change to the Chatham Airport. They'd like to see it become a regional hub, not just a local, small-town airport, which is what all the people who live in Chatham would like to see it remain. Thank you.
Would you introduce yourself? I didn't ask you to do that.
I'm Jerry Stahl. I live in West Chatham.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have Matt Karen who has his hand up. I'm not sure how you're going to address...
I saw Stephen's name.
Yes, but we have Matt Karen, the airport...
Oh, that's a good question. We have a number of points that were made by individual people, Mr. Fulton did and others. Let me ask the Board, would you like to hear an answer now on some of the accusations, or just go through the public inputs, is what I was planning?
I think the public really wants to speak.
I agree. Yeah, I agree. I just...
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, the next person through Teams is MT, who would like to speak?
MT?
Hi, Mike Thompson.
Dr. Thompson, welcome.
Okay, so you can hear me. I don't know if you can see me. No.
There you are.
There we are. Okay, all right, well, three minutes is a very short time, but we'll go very quickly. Thank you very much, Mr. Nick Castro. I appreciated some of the things you've said, but I would make one point, that the Chapter 100 only applies to the old Part 77. The new, the proposals require Terps' approach surfaces, and so that's new, and I'm not sure that that Chapter 100 will apply to any easements required for the Terps. One point. Okay. I'm glad that we've recognized that under mass law, the Airport Commission is basically the COO, the Chief Operating Officer of the airport, but it's the town that is legally and financially responsible for the airport, acting as the sponsor, as Mr. Costello said, and as the chief executive officer with the role to determine strategy. I think that's a very major point. I was going to mention the Airport Layout Plan, but Jerry Stahl has done a great job on that. I mean, the Layout Plan could introduce 46 navigation easements, because one of the slopes that's in several, in one of the drawings, is the old one that has 46 navigation easements, and all the addresses of all the folks that would be subject to those easements are in the Layout Plan. So that's a very slippery slope. So is the Select Board prepared to face the moral, political, and financial costs of takings by eminent domain, enforcing property owners to sign navigation easements that the Layout Plan indicates could escalate to 46 or beyond? That 40-to-1 that Mr. Stahl referred to is actually a departure, instrument departure path, which is required for instrument departures. It's in the FAA regulations. I'm going to emphasize where the FAA regulations impact on some of the things that may happen. So now there's a cascade of major governance based on decisions for yourselves that have to be faced. The proposals would require major expenses to the town, including navigation easements, compensation for the airspace of property owners, as Mr. Fulton suggested, and these would be under the much larger proposed new surfaces, the Terps' surface. Large incidental expenses that really haven't been budgeted, and of course, the 5% contribution for all capital expenses. So is the Select Board prepared to commit the town to interminable spending on the airport? The Airport Commission advocates instrument approaches for poor visibility, which would require variances from the FAA, such as allowing a 3,000-foot runway, but those and increased traffic would only increase risks to people living, working, and driving in the RPZs. So is the Select Board prepared to increase risks in the RPZs? Mr. Dykens brought up the issue of the airport, of the control of the types of airport, the types of aircraft that come to the airport. The issue there is that if the number of flights landing is less than 250 a year, then the FAA is hands-off. If they think they can land, they will land. Once it becomes over 250 landings a year, then the FAA will get involved, and I have a letter from them to that effect. So the, and the traffic has been so much greater this year, as somebody mentioned, that they will definitely be over that 250. So at that point, the FAA would be prepared to take action. And the issue is that the turboprops have a large wingspan, and FAA standards would require, that's a large wingspan, put them in a different group, different design group. And FAA standards would require all the trees on the far side of the runway to be cleared, the fence and bike path to be moved, and an extra area of the wetlands and the vernal pool to be clear-cut. So is this Select Board prepared to sanction the additional environmental damage and social harm from noise to allow turboprops to use this airport? Gale Associates stated in the environmental assessments that not accepting the proposals would reduce revenue from rental cars and 2,500 passengers a year allowed by the FAA. Whatever Mr. Harrison claims, Gale is saying very clearly that these proposals would increase traffic and commodization around the airport. So is this Select Board prepared to allow a commercial airport that includes more noisy turboprops, decimates the environment, and changes the character of Chatham? The FAA does allow an option, which would avoid navigation easements and environmental impact. As Rick Levitt said, that is to remove, would also remove the RPZs. Mr. Levitt said, retain the traditional airport, at least for the moment, using a threshold displacement. Another thought came to me as...
Michael, you're way over three minutes. We have a couple people waiting. Wrap it up, okay?
Okay, one sentence.
Yeah, I know.
All right, I'll omit that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me here. I'm Reed Mohammed and live here in Chatham. What I would ask you for, as leaders of the town, to tell us what each of you thinks about the way issues that we've been talking about this evening that are swirling around the airport, how each of you feel about, we've been talking this evening about, well, is it legal to do this, or is it not legal to do this? But what you, you should start with what you want to have happen, and then you can proceed to how you get it done. For example, what do each of you think about adding equipment that allows planes to land that we've talked about a bit? Are you for it, are you against it, particularly in bad weather? Do you support the taking of the navigation rights? We've talked a lot about that. I haven't heard, I think, anyone explicitly take a position on that, however. And what do you think about, of course, the big one, the increase in commercial use of the airport? I've heard some somewhat negative comments from some of you, but it's, I haven't heard the positions of all of you. And are you satisfied with the amount of revenue which you receive from the airport? These are questions about what is best for the town. They're not legal questions. First, that's where we need to start. Your responsibility is how best to guide the town in making decisions. The town should hear about how each of you believe the airport should evolve in the future. I want to add a PS here. You talked about, I think it was Mr. Kokolas, I may be wrong, talked about going to the FAA and made the analogy to the fishing issues that occurred earlier. And I would caution you in the sense that none of you are, and I'm sure you all agree, experts on the law associated with flight airports, airplanes, and so on. I understand from a lawyer that, in fact, it's a very specialized part of the legal field, which I think no one here would claim to be. So I know that having another lawyer that you're paying for is not something you entertain lightly, but I really think that if you don't have an expert in your court, you're going to have difficulty in making progress towards what you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next on the side?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next remote participant is Stephen Buckley.
Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you. If I ask a clarification question of the, Mr. Costello, is that kind of against my time? If he takes two minutes...
I won't let, I won't let his answer take into your time. Pat, are you available? Go ahead.
On the PowerPoint, I believe it's page seven, although they're unnumbered, so I counted them. Massachusetts General Law 90 is the PowerPoint thing. I believe, I believe he said, Mr. Costello said that 51I authorizes, is the one that, it doesn't say it there, but it said something along the lines that the Airport Commission has to comply with FAA regulations. I was, and I was confused, because I used to work for the FAA, and I thought that their regulations only applied, right, that the Airport Commission is not an arm of the federal government, and that they were not required to fulfill federal regulations unless it applied directly to them. So things like the public involvement requirements of the FAA, which I'd been told by the Airport Commission, didn't apply to them, because that's for FAA people. So I just wanted to clear that up, as far as, does the Airport Commission have to follow as if they were a proxy for the FAA?
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stephen.
I'm sorry.
Pat, are you available?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Pat.
Good evening, Steve. The point I was making is that General Law Chapter 90, Section 51I, which addresses power of commission, expenditure of funds, contracts for maintenance, operation, construction, and enlargement of airports, says, "The Airport Commission shall be authorized to expend any funds granted to or received from any source or appropriated by the town for airport purposes and may make contracts." There's a proviso in there that I'm going to quote from. Provided that where such maintenance, operation, construction, enlargement, and improvement of the airport and purchase of materials, supplies, and equipment is financed wholly or in part with federal monies, the Airport Commission may act in the manner prescribed by the federal authorities, acting under the laws of the United States, and any rules or regulations made thereunder, notwithstanding any other law of the Commonwealth to the contrary.
Okay. So the key word is prescribed, and I guess that's the key issue, was whether or not the FAA in their requirement, public involvement, public engagement, and so forth, was prescribed and bound by the FAA rules, of which there's quite specific about public involvement. And I believe it was last, maybe it was last December, but I think, I believe that the vice chair of the Commission said, that doesn't imply that that's for FAA employees. And I'll have to go back and review the video, but I just think it should be more clear, as I've always been saying, that the process needs to be more clear about what's going on for who, in plain English, not Massachusetts General Law language, so people can understand who's got the ball, who's responsible for what, and where do I find that, where does it say that? Because now we can all find these things on the Internet, but they have to cite them in order for us to find them. It's just saying FAA says this, FAA says that. So anyway, and the other part I was trying to make was, the environmental assessment never projected what they think the new traffic will be. There was a noise assessment. They said, we don't need to do a noise assessment, because the traffic's so low. So anyway, that's, they, but they never, how can you disagree with what they think it's going to be when they never projected what they think the new traffic will be when it becomes much more safer for more planes to land? Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Jurors, welcome.
Juror Suxans, Chatham. Before I go into the presentation, there were two comments that I have made, two comments that I have to make on the Mr. Costello's comments. He said that the Boston Airport, that people brought some lawsuits and they were unsuccessful. Within the last year or two, and I mean, it did not happen with the last year or two, but I read this, that the Boston Airport had changed their flight routing... but I read this, that the Boston Airport had changed their flight routing of how planes land, and this, and the planes were flying over different parts of the surrounding community, and they filed a complaint about the noise, and the Boston Airport lost, and they had to pay millions of dollars to insulate some houses, businesses, to put in noise abatement, insulation, and for various buildings. It cost the Boston Airport millions of dollars. So, yes, the public can still win. FAA is not an authoritarian that, no, you cannot, you know, we can sue us, but we will not bend. They have lost, and they lost in Boston Airport. The other comment was, I live in Maryland, and we have a national airport just outside of Washington, and they were able to establish certain hours when planes could fly in, and apparently FAA agreed. Planes could not land after 10 o'clock unless it was an emergency, and this had to be justified in writing, and planes could not take off before 6 o'clock. Now, realize that this is a commercial airport. There are probably more people, that probably brought the issue. Chatham Airport is smaller. We have a smaller population. But the point being is that the comment that Mr. Costello made, that you cannot establish hours for airports, yes, you can. It can be done. If, and, and I will ask that if the town really wants it, they can push it, and the select board, if you really want to have hours, you can push it, and I'm sure that FAA would probably agree if we have enough moxie to speak up. Those were the two comments. The other comments had to do with the presentation where he talked about the limits of power of the town manager and the select board. I will talk briefly more about the select board, and I'm not a lawyer, okay, and I will not quote you FAA regulations. I will just quote you what has been precedent. On the last airport master plan that was generated in 2004, it went before the Cape Cod Commission. And since I have only three minutes, okay, I will quickly read a summary that they published in 2004. This is part of the jurisdiction, general findings, G3. The airport site is owned, and this is from the Cape Cod Commission, okay? This is not FAA, this is not Mastod, Cape Cod Commission. Why they said this, I don't know. The airport site is owned and under the ultimate control of the Town of Chatham. Interesting. As such, all proposed airport projects, either in total or in individuality, will require approval by the Chatham Board of Selectmen, old terminology, select board. And this includes things like development of the proposed new terminal building and other structures as tea hangers, and will require a building permit and a certificate of use and occupancy. The key thing is ultimate control of the Town of Chatham, said by Cape Cod Commission. A precedence has been set 17 years ago. So the select board, I believe, does have power. The comment also on the town manager, it said that the town manager has financial oversight to ensure that the town manager carries out what the select board has asked the town manager to do. So if the financial oversight, and my specific question is the same question that I asked at the town meeting, annual town meeting back in June, who has oversight of the airport revolving fund? And I didn't really get a satisfactory answer. The answer I got was, well, we'll look into it and get back to you. After several, no, not several, a couple emails, I got, I'm looking into it, I'll get back to you. It's now been three months. I still don't know, have not gotten an answer. The question that I raised then, which I, hopefully still—
You're over.
Okay. Was that in three, okay, what's the purpose of the town annual meeting voting on a budget for the airport revolving fund? Is this a dream or a wish, or, you know, what's the purpose of it? Is this a binding contract that the Airport Commission cannot exceed? So for three years, the Airport Commission has exceeded the town limits of $50,000, for three years in a row. For fiscal 2021, they exceeded their approved budget by 60%. By 60%. I don't think any other department in the town that would exceed their budget by 60%. There would be consequences. And as far as I know, there have been no consequences. So the town paid over $80,000. I don't know where the additional money came from, but shouldn't there be consequences if a commission exceeds their budget?
This is a little beyond governance, but we'll take it. Your points, we'll take it. Thanks, Jurors.
Can I read a Chronicle article?
So I can—
It's overtime. It's incorrect.
You're way over, and it's, what is that in reference to?
Assessing, the essence is that the select board supports what the Airport Commission does.
Okay. All right.
All right, your next remote participant is Elaine—
Thanks, Jurors.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Elaine?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the graphics stated, "The FAA received citizen assertions of violations and found none through January of 2016." That was five and a half years ago. No one can disagree, air traffic has increased significantly within the last five years with louder and larger planes flying at low altitude over a congested area in all weather at all times of the day and night. I can hear the P-12 preparing for takeoff 1.7 miles away. Chatham isn't necessarily even the final destination for passengers avoiding hyenas. Last week, as someone referred to, a Cape Air Cessna 402 that crashed in bad weather is a much smaller plane than the Pilatus turboprop that carries 400 gallons, that's 2,700 pounds of fuel, that frequently lands here. Had that been in Chatham, there would have been casualties on the ground. Up to 80% of all crashes occur within minutes of takeoff and landing, and is why there are runway protection zones. It was a little unsettling to hear Huntley say that Pilatus had to abort landing in bad weather last week. The people of Chatham are not only legally, morally, and financially responsible, but through the board and by extension the town manager and Airport Commission that you hire and appoint, we have, in my view, a legal right to have a say as to how the airport is run, which I believe has been lacking. Many are concerned the direction the airport is taking is totally incompatible with Chatham. Under the Airport Manager's contract, we only receive $30,000 a year with modest annual increases through 2032, allowing unlimited concessions at the airport with no revenue to the town, further increasing airport traffic. Because Section 8.2 of the Airport Manager Service Agreement states in part that it is subordinate to the development and operation of the airport, I would request a review of the contract to determine if it is compatible with the objectives of the Town of Chatham moving forward. I believe, as someone previously mentioned, that the Grant Assurance Number 22I is applicable. That is where we may prohibit or limit any given type of class of aircraft for the safe operation of the airport. I would hope that the selectmen support the safety of people on the ground by allowing only fair weather landings, where homes have been wrongly built within the RPZ. It is coming into an airport with no tower, and to find a way to restrict landings to reasonable hours for landing and takeoff, and restrict the type and frequency of large aircraft, including charter aircraft that carry more fuel, that land adjacent to a conservancy district within less than a mile of our drinking water wells, four, five, and eight. And in accordance with FAA prohibitions, that no further development or redevelopment occur within the existing RPZ, or expansion of the airport be permitted, as suggested in the ANPO. And if all else fails, I would like to know if we gave up the grant assurances making us effectively a private municipal airport, paying for all of our own maintenance, could we, in fact, restrict the hours and the type of aircraft to protect Chatham's quality of life and the environment and the safety of the people on the ground? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Gloria, welcome.
Thank you, Gloria Freeman. I had a longer statement, but it occurs to me that there is, at this time, only one solution that presents itself. Town Council has presented a lot of strong evidence that an airport commission has extensive authority. Therefore, I am suggesting consideration be given to, as was done with the Water and Sewer Commission. Give yourselves the role of airport commissioners. It was in 2001, I think, that the previous Board of Selectmen promoted charter changes so that the select board now has the powers and duties of the Water and Sewer Commission. It, the Water and Sewer Commission, used to be an appointed body, just as our airport commission is now. Some of you have said that you don't want to do that, but with an airport advisory board and a consultant, you can do it and should, so that the people, the sponsors, have an opportunity to be heard and can hold accountable those who are making decisions if they are not in the best interest of the town or its people. Everything points to you. Just think about it, and thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Who's next?
Mr. Chair, the next remote participant is Paula Lofgren.
Hello, Paula, welcome.
Paula, you're still muted.
Hello there.
There you are.
There you are, okay. It took me four tries just to get into Teams this evening. Thank you for having this meeting this evening. There are a number of people whose concerns I agree with, particularly those by Rick Levitt. If you look at the map on the presentation from the 1950H, you will notice that most of the roads that we live on are not even on that map. And so the development of the town around the airport came after the airport existed. And I do believe that reconfiguration of the airport runway pushed the RPZ further back into West Chatham, which put people in a predicament that they didn't know of when they bought their property. Just a thought, Mr. Harrison had mentioned that there was no recourse on the pilots who are misusing our airspace, but I would point out that, yes, we do have a recourse, and that comes under 702 CMR, which is the Aeronautics Division, 5.0.8 on airport managers. It is a responsibility, the duties, under 3D, to report to the division infractions of aeronautical laws, so that it is the airport manager's purview to watch out not only for his own plans, but by law to do, to watch out for the skies around the airport. There is one question I have that hasn't been asked yet, and it's just a clarification question, if I may. In a recent newspaper article, the Airport Commission Chair stated that his and one other unanimous reappointment by the select board was a vote of confidence and support. And I would like to ask each board member this question. Do you consider these reappointments unqualified endorsement of the commission's goals, policies, and actions? And in particular, the push to have foul weather landings in light of the fiery crash of KPR aircraft, which ran off the end of the runway in Provincetown, attempting to land in bad weather last week? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Paula. And anyone else here? No, we have any other hands up?
We have Ms. Gibbs again remotely. Elaine Gibbs remotely.
You're still up, Elaine, or is that—
Well, my hand, I didn't put it down, I apologize.
Oh, that's fine.
No others. Thank you.
No others? Let's see. Okay, one more.
Hi, Carol Bliss, Chatham.
Thank you.
Pretty much everything I had written out, which is beautifully written, has been said in different ways, and I don't want to put you all to sleep. But I would ask the Airport Commission to clarify something that you said, Huntley, at your reappointment. You said your goal at the airport was to make sure that Tim Howard's business and hangar succeeded. And I think that's important, but I also think the needs and the wants of the rest of the community at large are as important. And I would request that you open your meetings, as the select board has done to in-person meetings, so we can have a dialogue at your next Airport Commission meeting.
Okay, well, I'm going to take, I have a bunch of questions here that'll be covered down. We'll get back to the Airport Commission. I don't want to answer them right away, but are you all right? You're going to be here for a little bit?
Pardon me?
Are you going to be here for a little bit?
Yeah, I think a lot of people have already left. It's been a long meeting.
Okay, I'm going to, let me check one more time. Anything else out there? Anyone else public? No, okay. What I'd like to do is, we had a number of questions, a number of assertions, a number of differences. I'd like Pat to comment on the Airport Commission, if you have anything or anything from the board before I do that. Any comments? Any, okay. Hey, Pat, and I wrote down a whole bunch, a number of, tried to encapsulate what people have said, and I give you a chance to talk to them. Did you take down notes, or do you want me to just go through the list I have?
Why don't you run through your questions, Mr. Chair, and I'll be happy to answer them?
Yeah, we'll start with, we'll start in the order they came, they had, I put a couple of them together. Mr. Fulton on avigitation easements and his comments on easements, and he wants to work with, he said to work with the select board. Is that the right person to deal with, given what you had said? But we'll start with that.
Sure, and I have read everything that Mr. Fulton has submitted. He's obviously a very knowledgeable gentleman, and I take very seriously what he puts his time and effort into writing, but I do respectfully disagree with his position on the power and authority to acquire easements. One portion of Section 51G of Chapter 90 that he did not address in his memorandum to me was a statement that says, "For the purposes of establishing an airport, the Airport Commission of a city or town, whenever appropriations have been made therefor, may take property by eminent domain under Chapter 79." by eminent domain under Chapter 79." And it goes on to say, "As may be necessary for the removal and prevention or establishment of an airport hazard." So the Airport Commission clearly has an express statutory charge to acquire easements within property outside of airport limits for the purposes of preventing hazards. And I think that was the point that Mr. Fulton stated lies exclusively with the Board of Selectmen. I would disagree on that basis.
Okay, thank you. And I just, maybe the point was missing, but I think that this board and also the Airport Commission said, "We're not going to run to do avigitation easements or eminent domain. We're going to try to find ways to take care of this without doing that." And so, no matter who, whether it's Select Board or Airport Commission, we're not, we don't want to do that if we don't have to, and that, but legally, we can. All right. Next one has to do with policy, and it's a policy change that the comment was made, there's a policy change at the airport, that the Select Board has the responsibility for policy. Therefore, the Select Board can change the policy of what's going to happen at the airport to include not having commercial aircraft come in, not having, determining what kinds of airplanes can come in, and that gets back to the basic problem we have, who's in charge and who determines how that will happen. Is it really a policy issue for the board? And, you know, it's, it's not trying to get away, I'm not trying to not do my job. What I'm trying to do is do my job legally and go to the right people to try and get changes we can make. So, anyway, I'll let you answer that.
Excuse me. The provisions of Section 51E of Chapter 90, which discusses the powers and duties of the Airport Commission, says that it shall have custody, care, and management of the municipal airport of the town. I think custody, care, and management is somewhat of a term of art that's used frequently in Massachusetts general laws, and in my view, it does vest substantial, if not exclusive authority in the body to which it refers to, in terms of operations and planning of the facility, in this case, the airport. So while I do think the Board of Selectmen is the primary policy maker of the town, certainly would have an opportunity to weigh in, I do think that within management of the airport, the authority to establish the nature and type of uses to which the airport is put lies with the Airport Commission.
One comment was made about Cape Cod's Commission Report in 2016, and what they said was required as far as, you know, the town, which I think you've mentioned is, you know, sponsoring responsible, and the comment was that it was going to, I believe, the Select Board. Cape Cod Commission Report, I, I guess your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I am aware of that correspondence. I do recall it having come up some time ago. I haven't looked at it recently. My thoughts are twofold. Number one, that comment made well have been made within the context of the Cape Cod Commission regulations in terms of DRIs or what have you, and the chief executive authority of the town may have had some role in that proceeding. Or, quite frankly, Cape Cod Commission, in my view, could have been mistaken in terms of that statement. With, disregarding the authority of an Airport Commission appointed pursuant to Section 51D, in such an offhand fashion, I don't think would be appropriate. Again, I don't want to cast any aspersions on the statement. It should certainly be taken within the context in which it was written in that document.
I'm going to jump around one, one, get back, I want to, we talked about the RPZs, but I'm going to go to one other question first. Now, let me do it. It kind of all fits together. The whole idea of the RPZ and the threshold. The runway protection zone has been around since 1951. The point is, if you move the threshold in, that shortens the runway, so smaller airplanes are required to come in. The, and that would allow for then, you know, different land use underneath where the RPZ is. I guess the question is, the point made was, well, you, the Select Board, can do that. Is that true? Second is, if you move the threshold, airplanes are still going to fly over that area, but I guess they're going to fly over at a higher level, so you could do something, but there's still, there's still airplanes there, so, and it also shortens the runway, which, to some pilots, may be a problem. So I guess my question is, RPZ was put there by FAA, threshold has to be moved, I guess it's FAA that would have to determine it, or is it the Select Board that could change that? I guess that's basically it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe the Select Board would have a unilateral right to change that. I think the RPZ is determined pursuant to federal regulation. Certainly, the zoning that would apply to the RPZ, the zoning restrictions, is a townwide determination. Planning Board would play a key role in that, as would the Airport Commission, as would town meeting. Town meeting's the ultimate operator. They would decide whether to adopt the bylaw or not, but I don't see that as an area of jurisdiction for the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, and I guess the final point that was made, did I go to, we're getting late, that had to do with a change of the charter that makes the Select Board become the Airport Commission. But if we were a Airport Commission, does anything change, except maybe the people that are involved? But the rules and regulations we'd have to follow are the same. Not discounting that point, I just want to understand what it would mean.
I, that's an interesting point. I was looking at the statute when the speaker brought that point up, and it basically, Section 51D basically says, "Upon appropriation and subject to applicable provisions of law, airports may be established from time to time and operated by any town as provided in Sections 35 to 52 inclusive." The next Section 51E says, "In any city or town in which an airport is established under Section 51D, there shall be established a board consisting of a number of members," the Airport Commission. I'd be interested to see the process by which the Airport Commission was initially established back in the late 50s. Presumably, it was under Section 51D. If it was a town meeting vote, the general rule of thumb is, you follow the same process to dismantle a board that's created it, and that would be a town meeting vote. There is a general authority to operate airports under the earlier sections of Chapter 90. We alluded earlier to that provision of Section 40G, that did vest some authority in boards of selectmen to acquire easements for, to eliminate airport hazards. I assume that those earlier provisions would apply to those towns that have not adopted the Section 51D and subsequent statutory guidelines for airport operations, and I think it would be possible. I think we would have to do a little bit more legwork historically, just to see how and by what authority the Chatham Airport Commission, as it's presently constituted, was created.
Okay, thank you. Airport Commission, any comments, Huntley? You were, you asked a direct question, so.
I, could you repeat the question? There's been so much going on that...
Yeah, repeat your question, because I didn't write it down.
Who?
Let's see.
I just want to know what your goals are for the airport.
Oh, that's right.
... stated that one of your goals, I'm not sure I'm rewording it correctly, was to see Tim Howard and the airport hangar restaurants.
Yeah, you should be at the podium, but the question, your question is basically, you made a comment in your interview.
Whoa, 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 stop.
My question?
Yeah, it was just, it was just a general comment when, at the time of my appointment, that I said I would support the airport, Tim Howard, the restaurant, the concessions, and basically what goes on at the airport, because that's the charge for an Airport Commission.
But at the expense of what the community is telling you is happening, and what the town wants to see their airport become?
I don't think any of those things that I said are at the expense of anybody.
Okay, well...
I'm supporting the airport...
Words matter.
And, and the operation of the airport.
Words matter.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Huntley?
Yeah, I, you know, there's a lot's going on here tonight. I think this has been a good conversation with everybody, given the hour. I'm not going to try to start a rebuttal at quarter of nine at night, but I do want a chance to put something together to answer some of these questions from the Airport Commission's point of view, whether it means another joint meet, excuse me, another joint meeting, or whether I do it at an Airport Commission meeting. I don't know. I'd like to speak with you all about it and see where we go. But I, there are a lot of comments that were made tonight that, some of which, as I said in my article in the newspaper, are just full of misinformation, a lot of what I would consider grandstanding by people. I know that's a harsh word, but I think there's a lot of information that's been thrown around regarding the airport that just is not true. We're not, the one thing I noted here tonight, someone said something about the expansion of the airport. Well, what exactly does expansion of the airport mean? There is no expansion of the airport. Does that mean physical expansion? Does it mean, what kind of expansion are they talking about? The number of flights that are coming in this year are right on par with the way they've been over past years. The turboprop flights, about the same as they've always been. There have been no changes. And, and the, one, another person in, from the public, mentioned the fact that there were no projections regarding noise in the EA. All the projections of traffic are right in the AMPU, going out several years, and it's all right there. So, you know, I think we have, we have, you know, an opportunity to answer some of these questions. You know, the bottom line, I think, is that a lot of the people don't want to hear the answers, and we've been going around and around with this for several years now, and it's just a matter of, we're putting out answers, we put it on our website, the Airport Commission website and the town, town, town website. The answers are there, but from what I hear tonight, there have been a lot of comments that people are repeating over and over and over. We've answered a lot of the questions. There are a lot of things that, we are total in compliance with the law, the FAA regulations, the state regulations, and so on. And it's, I'm sorry I'm getting worked up over this, but I'm getting tired of it. And we do have, and we do have an opportunity to rebut some of these things, and I'd like that opportunity at some point.
Wait a minute, Juris, I get you. We're not going to have a debate tonight.
No.
You made a comment, he made his comments, he'd like to talk to us or have an opportunity to do that. We'll talk about how we think that's appropriate and what way to do it, and I understand that you're passionate about, other people are passionate about it. There's, any comments from, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to see some data on air traffic, just year over year, the last two or three years, and the types of planes that have taken off.
I've got it.
That'd be great. I feel grossly uninformed, because I, you know, again, I live close by, and I have not seen an appreciable increase in traffic, at least during the weekends. I'm working during the week, but during the weekends, there's a lot of traffic, but I don't see any huge increase in traffic. I would like to see data, and I would like to see number of takeoffs and landings, if you have it, and the types of aircraft that are taking off and landing, because I think we need to get grounded, excuse the metaphor...
I can share that with all of you.
...in data. I think, I think it's important to get. Thanks, Huntley.
Okay, I think we've covered almost everything. There's a, obviously, there's a difference of opinion. We have our, Juris, I'm not going to take it anymore, we're about done.
The comment about the expansion of the airport.
We heard you, yeah, I know. You, people have said there's been an expansion, the Airport Commission says there isn't. We'll, we'll have, we'll either have it brought up here or at a, at another venue, because what we have now is an, is an opportunity to just keep on arguing. So I understand that. I understand the people's passion. I understand that, that we have an opinion from the, from our council, a strong opinion, and we have comments that were made by a number of people from, from the public that disagree with that, and we've seen those before in writing. So, you know, we're going to, one way or another, you know, with decisions going to be made and how we're going to proceed. So, Shereen.
Yeah, I just, I think we got a very good understanding of the Airport Commission's powers and duties and custody, care, and management and their authority here, and appreciated the time that everybody spent, Airport Commission and, and the public today. I guess the bigger question for everybody right now is, do we all, is the Board of Selectmen and the Airport Commission, are we all aligning ourselves with the core value of what the community wants and needs? And I'm not just talking about the public and the residents, but also pilots as well, but I think that the bigger conversation here has to be about aligning ourselves together with what we all want to see the airport look like. And I know that there's a difference of opinion in, or there appears to be, but I don't think there really is, and I think it's more conversation in that respect. I think we have a clear understanding of the authority now. We've had two public forums here. The questions continue to be raised, and that's just where I land after having this meeting, is, is, is in that camp about aligning ourselves all together. Thank you.
Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I learned some things tonight, but a lot of what was said tonight has been repetitive, things that I've heard or read. We have a town council, we pay them to give us advice. I think it's appropriate for, for the Select Board to listen to the opinions of town council and follow them. I've said that repeatedly on numerous, numerous cases. And I would caution the board about, this board, about getting too involved in the business of running the airport. We had some precedent about that, and that was in the issue of the skydiving activities, which were at a peak when I first joined the board, along with Selectman Matters. And I understand the pressure that the previous Board of Selectmen was under, but I, I think they may have gotten too far ahead of themselves in trying to address that issue, because there are some people that are never going to be satisfied. I'm interested in the broad, the broad segment of the community, who have raised some legitimate questions about the airport operations and the airport master plan update, and some of those questions and concerns, I voice myself publicly to the Airport Commission. And if you go back to the December meeting, I raise them then as well. But I just think, I understand what Select, what Board Member Davis is saying, I agree with the spirit of trying to work collaboratively, but there are very different roles here. I don't see this board taking on the role and function of the Airport Commission. I like the division of responsibility that we have, as has been articulated by our town council, and that's, you know, what's going to guide my approach to these, to these issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean. Corey?
No, the only question, I mean, it's been a very long evening, a lot has been said, and I appreciate everyone who's, you know, chimed in tonight, is what is the next step? Because, I mean, we can sit here philosophically, and I'm happy to share my own personal positions on some of the airport stuff. I mean, I support the airport very much. I think it has a certain limitation of what, how it should be operated, and I can go on and on, but what's the next step? Going to collect some data? I mean, Selectman Dykes asked for some data, that's very reasonable, it's, can be provided. Data is always good to make decisions, so what is our next step? I guess that's the question I'm leaving tonight's evening with.
Yeah, it's a good question. I think our, our next step, obviously, is, well, the Airport Commission is going to continue doing their jobs. We can discuss in some ways whether or not some of the issues that were brought up... We can discuss in some ways whether or not some of the issues that were brought up are, I would say, I don't want to say valid, but are they, do they meet the, the level of making them an issue? And I think that the Airport Commission, and Huntley should have an opportunity to present what he says, and he's, where he says there's our certain misinformation, things have been said. And I, I have to agree in some ways. If you, there's plenty of information on your website, and there's a lot of information there. And the, but the, but, but there are those that are still, we listen to Pat. And I think he made a very, he made it very clear that the management of air force rests with the Commission and not with the, not with the Select Board. I mean, that, that to me was very compelling. He's our, and as Dean has mentioned, he's our, he's our counselor. If anybody wants my opinion on, on everything that's being done, I'm more than happy to tell you. I've told a number of people how I feel about an instrument approach into an airport. And I've told a number of people how I feel about shortening the runway, and, and somehow you think that the Select Board is going to do that. I, I think that this past set of suits that happened with, 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 with skydiving, once, we still have suits going on. So the point, point is that, that doing what some, some of these, some of the individuals want us to do as a Select Board could also get us sued. So, potentially. And I'm not saying that's, that's, that's the reason not to do something if it's right. But let, I, I made a comment about, you know, this board is not afraid to go and deal with federal government, and that's not an adversarial approach. That's more of a, an approach to work with the FAA, to try and accommodate some of the real concerns people have with noise. And I wanted to get to that point. But I, 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 I will comment, an instrument approach with vertical understanding where you're coming in, and I'll take two minutes to explain it, at least in my humble position. I think Huntley tried to say that. You come in, in a visual approach, and you go to 600 feet. It's not daylight, it's not, if you're doing that, and you're going to make a circular approach, you're in marginal weather. And then you're making turns in marginal weather, looking out the window and flying the airplane. And you're going to have the power up, and you're going to do a whole bunch of things. If you come in on an instrument landing at a, at a, at a straight-in instrument approach, you're looking as, as we like to say, you look at the idiot, and you follow those. And it tells you how, how much of a slope you're going to fly at, it tells you what your power setting, close to what your power setting should be, and you follow it down. And yes, it's a lower altitude, but what do you do when you get there? You don't see anything? You get out, you climb out. Now, you mentioned an airport accident, I get it. Airport, airplanes crash, and I'm very familiar with airplane crashes, and I understand the fear that could be involved. That RPZ has been there for a long period of time. It's not going to change. That doesn't change unless we try to change it, which would be the FAA to do that. So, I, in my opinion, our, our town council has provided us with his opinion and recommendations. And it's not as if he hasn't dealt with the FAA before, and it's not as if he hasn't done this with other airports. So I'd be, it's, it would be, in my personal opinion, not a very bright thing to, to go against town, our town council right now unless there was something more that we've seen. Lot of what was said here, we've seen in emails, as was mentioned. So, you know, Corey asked a good question. Where do we go from here? Well, we're going to continue the way we are, as far as I'm concerned. People have, are concerned about noise, I think we should address that, and I think we can do that with the airport. If, if they're concerned about the approaches, the approaches have already been put into the AMPU, it's going to FAA, and, and it's not the Select Board who's going to make a decision on those approaches. It is FAA. And the approach that it's going to, I'm going to say it again, the approach that's going to be made is going to be determined by FAA, flying in here and flying approaches at both ends of the runway. So, I, I don't know. It's turning back the clock and saying, we're going to have nothing but, the airport the way it is. The airport the way it is, and as is approved, allows the airplanes that are coming in here now. And the only way that will change is if we can, we can, in my humble opinion, work with FAA to try to do that. And what are the odds? I don't know. I'd not probably very, very well. But, but using an airport like BM, BMI, wait, I can't, I should, BWI, is, is not the same as this airport, because BWI flies lots and lots of large aircraft out there. So I'm, I'm, to be honest, I have, I, I am very concerned about people that are, that are having noise problems. They are. You, you have to, you have to go there and listen to them and listen to what's going on, and I understand that. And maybe there's a way we can deal with that. That's all I really want to say. Is there anything else that we need to do, or did I preach too much? All right. Any other comments? If not, I'd like, let's see, we have, both boards have to have a motion to adjourn, right?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move that we adjourn tonight's special meeting. I move that we adjourn tonight's special meeting of the Chatham Airport Commission.
We have a second.
Huntley, can you, Huntley, excuse me, Huntley, can you say the name of the person seconding?
Oh, I'm sorry. The person who made the motion was Commissioner Galen. The person who seconded the motion to adjourn was Commissioner Cortese.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have to go.
And roll call Commissioner Burke.
Be left.
Commissioner Cortese.
Present.
Yes, adjourned?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Galen?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison, yes.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Let's adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you, everyone, for your comments, and I really appreciate them. And I, we all understand where we are. I just thank you again. Thank you. Good night, Chatham.